I want to call to get, call to order the Lincoln City, this is our work session, December 2nd, 9:00 AM, Monday. And how about a voice roll call? Rick, would you start it?
Rick Mark.
Which way?
Oh.
Judy Casper.
Richard Appicello.
Ron Chandler.
Dick Anderson.
Deanna Hinton.
Mitch Parsons.
Dan Kuss.
Kathy Steer, City Reporter.
And we have three folks in the audience, thank you for joining us this morning. As we go by different topics, we've got a presentation on 4th of July, we've got a presentation on gas tax, and a presentation on excise tax. Given time, I may, you know, as we finish a topic, see if any of you have comments from in the audience that you can weigh in with that. Anything else? All right. Mr. Chandler, you're...
Okay, one more thing to send around.
Okay.
This is a grab?
No.
Oh, this came back.
Mr. Cumbly will not be here, he has physical therapy, and I thought it was next week we had this one.
I see.
Kill him.
All right. I know I have to beat your schedule.
Yeah.
Okay. Much of this is familiar to you. We have looked at our 4th of July, and have put together a, I guess you'd call it an action plan. The police chief, why don't you come on up, because you're a part of this discussion. And Richard are both here to answer questions and participate on enforcement discussions. And so, and then you also, I just passed out to you a letter from Janet Knight and the REIA, so you have that as well, with their, with their comments pertaining to the 4th of July. Okay. So first of all, what I want to do with, and for, for our folks in the audience, whether it is on this, which is a PowerPoint, or on the next sections, which are just my notes, I'll put those up on the board so people can follow through. For the council, I'll have written ones for each of you so you can take notes. Okay, on the 4th of July, the first thing I want to mention is enforcement, deployment. This is our deployment for last year. Twenty-three Lincoln City Police Officers, two Lincoln City Reserve Officers, I think two Toledo Police Officers, three parole and probation officers, three dispatchers, one evidence technician, that's the force that we have had. The chief and I have talked about, is it possible to get more? Don't know. Other cities are faced with the same thing. There are two things that we did want to bring up. One of those is beach patrol. So I got a picture of these rhinos vehicles. We have one already that we have been used. One of the things that, that is, the chief and I talked about deployment and the actual how they operate during that evening. We have the one rhino that is there, but the police officers are actually, if they're not on the beach, they're either on the, they may be on foot on the beaches, in the case down in Tass, but in the other areas of the city, they're up by their vehicles on, in their cars. And as they see things, or as they get a report from dispatch, they then go down to the beach, they do their thing, and if they're confiscating fireworks, the rhino comes and picks them up and takes them. One of the things that we found in discussions with our residents, especially particularly up in Rhodes End, is that people were pretty smart, and they watched for when they did not see a police presence. And then they'd run out on the beach, and then if the police came down and saw that, and then they went back into their houses. And so, one of the things we discussed changing was, was having a greater police patrol on the beach itself. Right now, I have Willis Degenstein, our vehicle maintenance supervisor, who is looking at whether or not we can find a couple more rhinos that would be used, they're very expensive, maybe as high as $2,000 for new, so we're looking for some used ones. With the idea that like these, we would put light bars on them, so they become official police vehicles, and then have those patrolling the beach, not just, not just up on the road, so that the presence of the police is always on, is always on the, on the beach. Let's see, let's try to look at my notes. Another area that I, I didn't put up on this is, and the chief has been working through this, is just additional communication and working with volunteers. That is mostly educational, on when to engage, when not to, how to report to the police department, and, and that is really an area of communication that we put these officers in on the move, okay? The next thing that we wanted to discuss, well, first of all, any questions about that before I go on to the next? Yes?
I just have one. There was some discussion last year, the last summer, about confiscating the, and I know you're getting there, but confiscating the fireworks that are illegal, and that the only, there was only one vehicle that those fireworks could be put into. Is that, is that true, and is it...
You'll have to answer that question.
Well, yeah. If we're confiscating on the beach, that is the vehicle we're talking about, is our ATV, so, and then they are taken to a central location and turned over to our evidence person, so it doesn't tie other people up dealing with evidence, and it shortens that chain of evidence down to just two people.
So with, with adding more rhinos, then we can help alleviate the problem of not confiscating?
Yeah, yeah. It's not that we're not confiscating, it's just that if we do confiscate, it takes, if it's on the beach, we either have to cart them up on foot to a patrol car or wait for the ATV, right?
So you're losing time. And the other thing is, the conversation that I had was confiscating not on the beach, but up in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
And that there wasn't a vehicle available, so...
Yeah, in the neighborhoods, that really shouldn't be a problem, because if they're confiscated, they can go on a patrol car until we can get them to a, to evidence, just...
So either there was a miscommunication with me and one of your, one of your patrol guys or your sergeants or...
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I'm not sure what, you may have been talking about there, but seizing them in a neighborhood shouldn't, shouldn't be an issue.
Okay, that's what I thought that I wanted to clear. Okay.
So where would you confiscate in a neighborhood? I mean, are, are they... So it's, from what I understand, it's, it's hard to identify, you know, so I'm envisioning that the only time you're going to be able to confiscate it, you see them shooting, and their stuff is stacked around them.
Correct.
Correct.
Or, or what they're willing to turn over to you when you confront them.
That's exactly right.
Oh, okay. So, so really, a neighborhood issue is seldom, if ever, because you, you don't see...
Oh, I don't know, come to my street and you can...
Yeah. Well, and the trick is though, I mean, it's like, you know, I was trying to explain to Rhodes End, you know, probably last 4th of July, out of all the stuff that I saw when I was out on patrol, there were two situations that I should have issued citations, because I caught fireworks going off in neighborhoods.
Oh, really?
And, and, and so...
Not just fireworks, these are the big boomers.
But even in both those instances, after dark, as I rolled up and activated my lights and let my presence be known, it was like watching cartoons going back into the wall. And then, and then you have to be able to identify a person specifically by name, who you can name as, "I saw this person lighting the fuse." And then if they picked up their stuff as they scurried, then I don't have the right to go into their house and search unless I go after a search warrant to get in there. And so then I'm, I'm at the mercy of whatever, they voluntarily say, "Okay, well, I won't, I won't cite you if you turn over your fireworks," and then they walked out with a handful of ball rockets, and what you saw going off earlier was more, you know. So it's, it's just that, that challenge. I was talking with Chief Hamm and Chief Shermanhorn up at Cannon Beach this, this last week, and there are issues. And if you read the article, it was even mentioned in the REI thing on Seaside, Oregon, Chief Hamm is, is talking about almost identically the same things that we're, we're talking here at the state.
More minds, good.
Does your video, your dash cams or whatever it is, can that, because you're, if you're approaching them and you're seeing it, but then you try to catch them, but won't they be on tape? Or whatever, it's digital?
Maybe. So, like, my folk car, I don't have, I don't have a camera in my, the mark units do, but none of our unmarks. So that might be an option, but at night, you still have to, I mean, you can see the figures, until you're on top of them with white light, identifying their features.
One of the things that we know about any type of issue that the city is facing, or every city faces, whether it's speeding, mischief, whatever it might be, police presence in the keep is the best thing, or something to identify. You may have seen throughout town, there's one on 12th, there's several new speed, uh...
Red Apple.
Red Apple, thank you. All over the city. Those are good in place of police officers, because people have a natural tendency to slow down. So the presence is important, and that's why as we look at the enforcement, particularly on the beach, the rhinos create the presence of the police. And my view of it is, they just have those blue lights rolling the whole time, and there's not a time when those aren't, so that everybody up and down the beach sees the police car on patrol. Okay. Any other questions on, on deployment? Okay. The next thing we wanted to talk about was tools. There's really kind of three options that the police have. The one that is used the most is the confiscation, they can arrest, and they can give citations. All three of those exist today in our ordinances. We have relied heavily on the confiscation, but I need to point out, because of an error I made in a statement last year that kind of got a lot of length, it's kind of one of those viral things. The police officers have full discretion at however they feel best to enforce the law, whatever the dictates of the circumstances. There's not a dictation coming from administration saying, "This is what you should do," they have, it is entirely up to their discretion. Richard is going to talk a little bit about the two of the arrests and the citation. This is a discussion he has had with our police officers. We need to let it know to you, because to me, there's quite a bit of confusion, and we have not used it a single time in our, in our work with this. So I wanted Richard to take a few minutes and talk about this whole citation area. So for the crime of, you know, illegal fireworks, an officer can arrest you. So we all are familiar with this, we've seen it in TV, and, you know, get your head stuffed in the back of the police car, and get hooked up, and taken down to the jail and booked. So we're all familiar with that, that's, what everybody thinks of as arrest. You can also be issued a citation in lieu of arrest. So the police officer gives you a ticket, but that is essentially the same as an arrest, only you're not being taken down to the jail and booked. And usually, that happens for a misdemeanor offense. Citation in lieu, except there's some statutes that say, like, for domestic violence and things like that, mandatory arrest, you have to take them down to the jail. But for, for certain misdemeanors, you know, that you'll, you're just given a citation. And so we see a lot of that. Now, it's still a crime, so, you know, you get, you know, you show up for arraignment, criminal arraignment, the judge is going to do the same thing for it as if you had been lodged in the jail, he's going to read you your rights, he's going to tell you what your options are, ask you if you want a court attorney, if you want to hire an attorney, the whole thing. A couple of years back, the, and, and basically, there's no, it's just, it's just the police department's, usually it has to do with how much time you have, they can hook you up, they're not required to just issue a citation in lieu, they can take you for any crime, but it's probably more just the police department's, you know, policy of, "Well, we don't have time to run people down to Newport," it takes a lot, guy out of the, you know, area for a while, and they're just going to cut them loose anyway, because most misdemeanors are pretty low on the list of things that they're going to hold you for if there's overcrowding. But a couple of years back, maybe five years ago, there was a gal in Portland, Towanda Fuller, and then there was another gal in Portland called Benoit, I can't remember her first name. Fuller was arrested for shoplifting and theft, and Benoit was arrested for, had something to do with the Occupy Portland thing, criminal trespass or something like that. And they were able to successfully argue to the court that they were entitled to a jury trial, even though the prosecutor had reduced the charge to a violation. So whether or not it's a crime where you get hooked up, or a crime where you get a citation in lieu, the prosecutor, in this case, any offense that occurs within the city limits, I can prosecute. The prosecutor can reduce the charge to a violation. So you might get arrested for shoplifting, and taken down to the jail and booked, and, or just issued a citation. Started out as a crime, but the prosecutor can decide to endorse the citation, or the criminal complaint, and reduce it to a violation. So anytime the police issue a citation in lieu, I have to endorse the citation as a, as a crime, when it comes to municipal. But I can write, "Reduced to Class A violation" on it. And that means that we don't have to have a jury trial, because if it's a violation, you're not entitled to a jury trial. Well, the Supreme Court of Oregon threw a monkey wrench into that a couple of years back and said, "Well, but because of the taint of the criminal prosecution, and the fact that they were arrested, and all that, they were detained based upon criminal statutes and criminal procedures, these people are entitled to jury trial, so they can clear their names," and it was a very extreme opinion, but nevertheless, that's the law in Oregon, that in certain cases, a criminal defendant can, or a defendant who's facing a violation trial, which is usually just before a judge, can demand a jury trial. So we, one of the key points in that case was that the, it started out as a crime, and so criminal procedures were implemented from the beginning. So a couple of years back, we, well, four or five now, we enacted Section 904-010-C of our, of our code, which took all the criminal statutes, and, and said, "Okay, we're adopting these all by reference," so exact same language, "but we're going to reduce all these to violations." So the police now have an option, that say Ron's shooting off fireworks, so they can hook him up, stuff him in the police car, take him down to the Newport, they can give him a citation in lieu of arrest, so it's still a crime. Or the police can, not the prosecutor, the police can make a decision to just go ahead and issue a non-criminal citation. So they have a couple options. One is criminal, one is non-criminal, and it doesn't involve me. I, so it starts from the beginning, so on a violation, the police can't, you know, put you in handcuffs, you know? So they start in the beginning using only non-criminal procedures. They say, "Okay, I'm going to use this non-criminal." Now, we don't dictate to the police which one they can use, we just tell them, "We created this option for them." So they, they have it.
When does this option become available?
904 was adopted in probably 2014, it looks like ordinance 2014-03, but not, not quite sure. Could have been 2014, I don't know. We also made it in 2015, but that was a different amendment. So this is a tool that's been around for quite some time, but we have not really used it. And, and one of the things that the chief and I have talked quite a bit about is that there may be times when you want to go forward with a criminal arrest or criminal citation, which is going to give the person a record, okay? There are other times when you don't want to do that, but you still need to make it painful, so they remember that next time. That's the citation option that Richard is talking about. And so part of that, between now and the 4th of July, is for the chief and Richard to work with our officers and make sure they all have a clear understanding. There's been a lot of turnover since 2014, and so we need to make sure our officers have a clear understanding.
I, I just would like to say, you just mentioned a timeframe of July, and I'd say we have, not to the extent of July, but in my neighborhood, we also have that situation in the course of the year, a couple days before, a couple days after, but, and it's certainly not to the extent of what you gear up for for July, but you get lots of calls down to you.
So the take, the takeaway is that, though we've had an option that we haven't used, utilized, so now internal education will provide that, as a kind of a fourth option.
Yeah, I'll, you know, I'll have to own part of this, you know, 2014 was prior, my, my leadership, and I know Richard has mentioned that, you know, we can, we have these other options that come in through the city attorney and stuff like this. Getting cops out of their old habits as far as sticking to the ORSs and that sort of stuff is an interesting challenge, and as we ramped up last year, I'm not sure I even fully understood how we rolled this out, and, you know, do we put this, this on the citation, how we, how we get that out. So Richard and I'll have that all worked out by this, this next season, and we'll have that education in the hands of our officers. You know, the thing, the other thing that I will throw out there, so that everybody, you know, understands, is it's just whether we make the criminal physical arrest, whether we issue a citation for a crime, whether we issue a citation for a violation, that still is going to slow the process down. One of the reasons that we do the warnings and the seizures is because we can run from one to the other and make that a quick five, 10-minute encounter, and move on to the next one. Whereas we start issuing citations, the officer has to document enough information to generate a report, document the evidence, witnesses, all that sort of stuff, like you would anything else, and that's going to tie an officer or two others for an extended period of time on each one of those, and they do, so it will slow things down.
Now, there is a risk in that, the confiscation, and I've called several cities to talk to them about it, and they all do that same thing, but there is a risk. And that is that when, when you're essentially taking in evidence, and if it's not tied to the report and everything else, somebody can make a claim against the city that we stole their, we stole their stuff. So there is that risk, and like I said, I've talked with several cities throughout the state, and they're, they're all doing the same thing the chief was talking about, for the same reason, it's the, it's the, it's the timing, the, I don't want to say convenience, it's, it's the best deployment of your officers.
Well, there's that, and then, once you've established that you have got this evidence, like, right now, when we seize it, when it all comes back, we calculate it out, what the poundage is, and then we have to figure out where to store it. I can't store explosives in my current building, I won't be able to store them in my new building. So we have to have a place that we can put explosives and hold them for a while, which I'm still trying to figure out.
We're going to ask the mayor, put them in his shed.
Yeah. But then, then within a day or two of those seizures, we have Oregon military, ordinances for them, come up and pick this stuff up and take it and go take care of it. If, if we make these citations, then I've got to figure out how to hang on to this evidence until that, that trial is adjudicated.
I'm just going to say, I'm sure other cities have done it. There was something that you said, oh, so if you, if an officer decides that, you know, this warrants a citation, this warrants confiscation, this warrants whatever, I'm just thinking that, do they, well, I just, I guess I'll turn around as a question, do they keep the lights flashing while they're doing all of this work, or could they?
Absolutely.
Because I think that would really make an impact, you might only have to write two or three or four, however many of them, but that would, that would make an impact for a large area, because at least in my neighborhood, light flashes off of everything, and you can see it from quite a distance.
Right. And that's, that's the principle that we're talking about with the extra ATBs on the beach, is that keeping the red and blue lights running constantly as we're on the beach. We already know that they see headlights coming on the beach, they know it's an enforcement rig before we get there, whether it's got red dunes on it or not, so if we keep the enforcement lights rolling the whole time, at least if they can see it from a distance, maybe that'll quiet them down, we're not going to catch them.
And that's also needing the neighborhood too.
Right.
There's also the problem that we're, we're trying to overcome a history of not enforcing the law, and I think you probably need to just crack down and make a big effort for a couple of years, so that the culture changes fast.
I thought the plan was to arrest Bron every year, right off the bat.
Visually, yeah. I'm going to hire an actor. With batons, a taser.
I don't, I don't think that's a good idea.
You didn't have somebody who gets arrested about 15 times that night.
You know, just to throw out, because, you know, chief, you, you bring up a good point of the minute you, citation, or and what level, takes staff time and, and the process, and I'm, I can't help but remind us all that it's easy for us to, as electeds, to create new laws, and, you know, I'm thinking of code enforcement and everything else, because I find myself often talking to citizens about, "Yes, there is a law, it's a code enforcement, and yes, yes, yes." Then we get back to the cost of enforcement, and not just the enforcement, but it goes through the judicial system, and we've all been in that situation, the trials and where somebody pushes, not just everybody steps up and writes you a check for a fine, you know, they, people resist or test the system, and it, it costs taxpayers money to defend your, your laws. So I just keep it in mind that, yeah, it's okay to have something on the books, but then the next decision is, are you going to write the check to afford, to enforce it? So there's, there's that balance, that's all I mean.
Even violations can involve attorneys, you know, people hire attorneys and they want a trial for a violation. I mean, we had a guy who ran through a stop sign, but traffic light, "I want a trial." It's like, and, you know, he was an attorney, so they wanted me to do it. It, it takes a lot of time. Now, a violation is still easier than a crime, because as the chief said, you know, he pulls up and you get some people on the camera, maybe it's not as clear as it could be, so if you prosecute a crime, it's got to be beyond a reasonable doubt, but if it's a violation, it's just mere preponderance of evidence, 51%, just, you know, balancing, just tipping the scales of justice as it would be. So it's a little easier burden, but you still... So it's a little easier burden, but you still have to get the evidence and hold it and document it and all that stuff.
And I'd like to say too that I think part of, or a lot of this discussion today is to change behavior. We have a lot of people that, I can see license plates, you know, from the houses that are shooting off in the neighborhood, and so they're coming from Idaho and they're coming from Washington for a good portion, you know, and then we have the ones that have their second homes for both, so, in Oregon. And so it's, but it is kind of one region, and so we're trying to change behavior. So I'm not sure that not doing something because of cost for two or three years wouldn't actually be a huge benefit long-term to reduce the ongoing work that the chief and all of the blue guys have to do.
So all I'm saying is, we have a tendency not to recall or be reminded of all the total costs. So to me, it's a budget issue that, you know, if you're, and maybe that's what we've got to do for the next two years, put more money into judicial, because it will come, you know, in order to change the habit, and that's all.
Yeah, but we don't know how this is gonna work out. I mean, the police have more lights going if they decide to write a few violations. The word gets out. I mean, social media is instantaneous. I just got, you know, we can't do this here. The word gets out, and so I'm just saying that, you know, we need to have, what, you know?
And the word does get out, and I talked to Chief Sherman Horn about this, and I'll be talking to the chiefs. We've got a leadership meeting at the seaside next month, and we've got a homeless committee that's working on some issues, and this has come up. But in talking to Chief Sherman Horn at Cannon Beach, they have reduced it as they took a firmer stance. But the key, one of the keys up there is, and, you know, it's alluded to in the REI letter, that Cannon Beach banned all fireworks. Well, if you read the article that's attached there, it's the same ban we have here. There's, you know, you can't have illegal fireworks to begin with, and you can't have any fireworks on the beach because that's state park property, and they're banned from state parks altogether. So we're focused on the illegal stuff, but we still have illegal legal fireworks going off on the beach. But the thing that, in Cannon Beach, that was partial to their success is they don't have any fireworks at all. They don't do city fireworks or anything, and Chief Sherman Horn said, what that did is it pushed it outside the city to their beaches, just outside city limits, where they don't have any enforcement. Well, they have enforcement, but they don't have the ability to go down and patrol it. And then if you look further in the article, the other areas that had similar things, their fireworks programs have gone completely away. They don't have them. And so it's pushed everybody either outside or the seaside, and then you talk to Chief Hamm, and he's dealing with the same problem that we're dealing with, is how do we get a handle on this? And he doesn't even deploy, I mean, Lincoln City, we deploy every available officer until about midnight, and it puts a pretty good workload, because my day shift guy's got to double back now on day shift. Chief Hamm doesn't even do that. He only employs about half of his force at night because the other half has to double back on his day shift. And we're only able to do that for the one night, and we all know we've got fireworks running a couple weeks before till a couple weeks after. And so it's trying to figure out what that balance is, and as long as, you know, we have shows here and we're drawing this crowd, you know, it's gonna be interesting, you know, as we ramp up the enforcement side of this and start issuing the citations again, to see whether we get that reaction, because in my mind, what I'm seeing is that we will impact those that we get to, but like you were saying, it's like having traffic enforcement out there. Every week I've got a whole new group of people I'm trying to educate on what's going on. And so, you know, maybe we'll develop that reputation that we have, you know, lower zero tolerance for this kind of activity here, but.
Chief, going back to the citation levels and stuff, one of the things I've heard from citizens, so it's hearsay, but in theory, the officers, when they confront someone, confront folks, or try to explain to citizens why they're not handcuffing somebody, the story comes back that, you know, the city councils don't want to adversely affect tourism and all this kind of stuff. And it makes it sound like, you know, we're just, again, the interpretation that comes back that I hear says the officer feels handcuffed himself, herself, you know, I'd love to throw you in jail, but the city won't allow me. And it probably goes back to, you know, to this, now we're giving them another tool, you know, you can cite a non-criminal. So what I'm hoping for is there that consistent message from officers, you know, and a better understanding, not that the citizens are ever gonna remember or pick it up, but I don't know if the rest of you have heard of that kind of stuff.
Well, and it's curious, I'd like to be able to trace that back to individual officers, just like the conversation, you know, what was concerned about is why somebody would give somebody an excuse as to why they're doing or not doing something as, okay, well, I'm blaming this on the city council, because that's not the message that goes out in briefing or even in the education of my team leading up to that, is you go out there and you take action based on what you're seeing. It goes back to that officer discretion, and if you're seeing somebody being endangered, I mean, we do encourage them to get to as many as we can and seize as much as we can, so therefore primarily warnings, obviously, is what we've experienced at the time that I've been here. But the word is always, you know, if there's somebody, I mean, we have cited in the past when our guys have engaged people that they've seen hurt or, you know, really endanger somebody. You know, Ron and I have talked about this. I mean, quite honestly, it's not that we're encouraging or wanting to allow this, but of all places to set off fireworks in the state, on the beach is probably the safest place that you can actually get away with this, as long as you're not endangering the people around you or the residents and stuff. And so that's what our guys are watching for, is stuff that is recklessly endangering other people, and then otherwise they're just trying to run from one, one call the other, and literally while you're there dealing with the one, you've got it going off on all sides of you while you're standing there. So, but it's an educational process, we'll make that part of more of what we do and make a point to let this team know that, you know, there aren't the type of excuses that we give out there. We don't throw you guys under the bus, and we use the laws that you're supposed to be under.
I just had one short comment too about the rhinos, just something that just occurred to me. I was having a chat with our emergency preparedness guy, Canton Murphy, and we got to talking about those rhinos and how, you know, after the big one fails, then how do we really get around, and that the beaches probably won't have those, and I'm not going off on a big tangent, but only that, you know, we were both kind of hit on the idea of sharing the load of purchasing rhinos.
There are multiple uses for those, and the chief's talked about other activities where they need to get emergencies and non-emergencies where they would be very helpful, so we're not looking at buying them for just one day out of 365.
And we have a lot of trail, trails that need maintenance and all that, so they could be used in a variety of ways.
Ron, I was reading the Rhodes End Association letter and suggestions, and it felt, well, you know, one of the things that bothered me is the lack of information, you know, I underlined the proliferation of fireworks. I'm not sure it is proliferation. I know, you know, Rhodes End certainly suffers it. I hear it at 15th Street, I got B Jackson, so. But frankly, I don't know that it's more than it was yesterday or last year or anything else. Well.
In Rhodes End it is, and it shot up like, I don't know, maybe three years ago, just.
But I think that's some of the kind of stuff, it may move around, but again, we've added official fireworks at the lake and our own show, and then we discovered this year another show that was legal and licensed that we.
And they have four.
Four, oh, so there are four.
You have the casino, you have ours, you have the lake, and then you have the guy that licensed it.
Yeah, yeah, right, so.
Yeah, the only way we really have to track, and it's not a very good way to track, is just how much is confiscated. We, I could not tell you from year to year, and as I have visited with different people who are, especially those that have been here for some time, I get mixed answers. Some say it's been increasing, others say it's been increasing, but the only real measurement we have is the amount that's been confiscated by the police, and that's not necessary and accurate, because there's too many variables underlying to it.
Can we go back to the licensed illegal ones? Is there only one person?
Well, the licensed are not only.
Well, I mean, okay, da-da.
The what?
Licensed illegal.
Illegal. All right, you know what I mean. So is there, is there only gonna be one? Can more people apply? If they do, can we publish them in the website or the newsletters so people know where they're going to be and get a license issued by a certain timeline so we all know which one to send or avoid?
Well, possibly, possibly as far as knowing who they are and letting people know. It's not a license for the beach, it's not a license by the city.
What is it?
It's a license by the state.
And they could go anywhere they want?
On the beach, because the beach is considered to be.
In front of my house, actually.
They could, they could. And there's requirements that they have to, I think they have to identify the location, but they also have to have somebody who is qualified and certified to be able to set off the fireworks. To my knowledge, and I didn't know this until Council Mark ran into this last year, that we have just one that has done that.
And we weren't informed, we're not routinely informed.
They don't have to, the state does not have to inform us.
No, we have been aware of this individual for several years, because he's done it for several years, so we've been aware that that's gone on down there.
It's actually a nice alternative to have. If you're hosting a big party at your home and you want to get out on the beach and not run the risk of getting arrested, then you can go to the state and make application for that. That's actually a pretty good alternative, again, that discusses with other cities. Some of the options that they've been considering is, how do we identify a specific location where it's okay here and it's not okay somewhere else? Well, that mechanism already exists, except permitted by the state. The state says you can have it, and here's the location, and like the chief says, it's no longer illegal, and there's likely going on, set off by people that supposedly qualify.
Could we ask state parks to inform the chief when those are provided, so we know ahead, and then maybe we can do, as Judy suggested, put it on the website or somewhere so people can see that that's, rather than taking up the time and all that. And Dick, I just wanted to say that the proliferation in Rhodes End, I would say, I don't know what REI was talking about in particular, but from my vantage point, there's more within the neighborhood, bigger, huge, those big displays that are mortars and stuff when they're shooting them. When I can see, watch them do it, they shoot off the deck towards other houses or up towards the trees, and so that's a bigger concern than it was before, and on the beach, it's kind of, they're just bigger and less longer, so maybe that's what they're referring to. That's my point of view, I don't know what they're talking about.
Okay, the next thing that we wanted to bring up is marketing. This is first, the marketing campaign for illegal fireworks, which is our keep it legal, keep it safe. This is the campaign, or this is the flyer that we used last year. If you need a refreshment, I had the statistics from last year, but we used three primary sources, flyers, signs, and social media. The signs were the ones that went at the beach themselves, and they were much larger than the state signs, and we'll still have those to put up. And one thing, one change we think we can do, the social media campaign worked pretty well. One change that we think we can do on this is that you actually have two violators. You have our guests, tourists, that are coming into town, then you have our residents in town, and they're both there.
Or second.
Huh?
Well, I was just gonna say, make second homeowners too, because that's.
I would add those to the guests.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, people that don't live in town on a full-time basis. And then we have our residents that do live here on a full-time basis. One of the common things that I have known throughout my career, and every city manager knows it, when people start complaining about speeders and we start putting more enforcement, it means their children are gonna be getting tickets, and their neighbors and everybody else, because there are people that live here that are setting off illegal fireworks. The change that we can do is that it seemed to work that for the campaign, for those that don't live here, work during the month of June, okay? People aren't buying their fireworks until that time, so it worked well for that. We can spend more time leading up to it for our residents, and so we can add several marketing techniques that are geared specifically to our residents that say, keep it legal, keep it safe, don't set off illegal fireworks. And so, and yeah, so that's the marketing as it pertains to the illegal.
I think there was a line in that flyer, I can't read it now, that said, if you can buy it, if you buy it in Oregon, it's legal.
I think there is one, there's a backside to this, and so I think that you're right.
The risk of stepping into sensitive territory, I think, where are the illegal fireworks bought and they're bought on?
Washington.
Washington and Idaho.
And what about reservations in Oregon?
I don't know for sure. I'm not aware that, I don't know if the tribes are selling anything like that.
Okay, well, it's what I see, maybe when I'm in Washington State, that's where it's at.
Yeah.
Can we just cross the bridge?
Well, sure, I mean, yeah.
Could be more complex. I have allowed the sale of them, they just don't allow the lighting them off.
Right.
Really?
My son's a firefighter over there, and they can buy them anywhere in Idaho, but it's illegal to set them off. They have the same, or even legal fireworks on the books, but they obviously allow the sale of the illegal.
Talk about a difficult situation.
So anyway, so we will, our plan is to continue the same campaign we did, adding a longer time period to make sure we reach our own residents.
Well, does it have consequences on there and for illegal? I can't read it.
Um, yeah.
It says it's a class B.
Yeah, it just says possession of illegal fireworks is a class B misdemeanor and can result in a fine of up to $2,500.
And it should say, end six months of jail.
You may also.
Except for the last one. You would've reached two stocks.
So that can be arrested.
Maybe that's a good. Six months in jail, I would know one go to jail for six months.
So, you know, and here, Rhodes End made some suggestions, you know, if you light, we will cite, you know, versus keep it safe.
Come on vacation, leave on probation.
Yeah. All junky beside, you know, those kind of things.
So what we can do is, I mean, the fire is digital.
Yeah.
Well, it's both, we can just make up multiple different slogans.
I was wondering.
The current slogan, which is kind of against the charter of things like prostitution.
And I don't know the mentality of folks who are lighting these off, but they obviously aren't buying them here, they're imported. So how do we get the message to those who are buying it and coming to Lincoln City? So I guess my question is, are we marketing to where the folks are coming from?
Yes. So as Ed looked into this, the traditional ways that we would market, like billboards, magazines, things like that, he found it would not be effective. He found the most effective way is social media, and would target the areas, you can target by zip code.
Okay, so we're doing that to their.
Yeah, and so perhaps one area we need to target a little bit more is eastern Idaho. I think all of his has been in, well... I think all of his has been in, well, he is really focused on where our tourists come from, which is important in Salem, is where our tourists really come from, so he's targeted those zip codes.
I would suggest a billboard, you know, right there in Grand Ron, as everybody's heading over, because billboards speak to people who are driving.
At least as you come into.
You know, a lot of, you know, social is really great for people who are social. There are people who don't, but it's kind of like, a billboard is something you do read. You can't measure it simply because it's very hard to know how many people read it, but, you know, for a short period of time, right there as you're hitting the corridor.
We have, we have a billboard. It's not our billboard, but we, we have a lease on it, so.
Okay, I thought, sorry, I thought we were going to do, or maybe we did, electronic signs also at the entrance to the city, you know, digital.
Reader board.
Reader board, yeah.
We have not installed reader boards, so we don't.
I thought that was part of the conversation last year, is.
Could, could there be a location to, for those people who go, oh dang it, I didn't know, I guess I better get rid of these things? Is there? I totally feel like saying that.
They'll take them home.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're happy to take those, but again, if we market that campaign, then I better make sure that there's somebody there to receive them, because they can't come into the building, so.
Okay, I have just an idea, you know, what you do with them if you find the.
Just kind of, just one more thought, sorry, on the Color City fireworks, I just, a couple days ago, talked to a neighbor there who loves the fireworks, has been supporting it for years, they help contribute to it, they help clean up, they do a major, you know, I, I did have, I expressed a concern, I lived in Clark County, when the fireworks were legal and it was, I had two neighbors who, I think I've said this before, we had this sort of macho contest, and then I would spend the next couple of weeks picking little bits of black plastic out of our garden, and I swept the streets the next day. So I was wondering, and I, I said to these neighbors I talked to the other day, I said, it's great that you do cleanup, but that, that, those black plastic pieces, you know, must be washing out in the ocean, and I just think that that's a whole other, you know, we're so concerned about washing plastics in the ocean. And they said, actually, don't pick up, it's cardboard, is what they, they saw, so I don't know.
So you're suggesting an environmental twist?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
To the appeal to a sensitive.
But, and I also, I, I had to, I had to say to these neighbors, you know, I walked, it was the first time, I've lived in this street for four years, this is the first time I actually saw those fireworks, I don't know, I might have been away or something. And they were pretty impressive, in fact, they were better than the Sletz Bay fireworks. And, and I, I can understand the appeal, I also have, I haven't spoken directly with some neighbors, but I think you have, you mentioned.
Oh, yes.
Who, you know, people with dogs.
Yes, she has to keep her dogs drugged for like a week, uh, 4th of July, because it was hot down there.
Uh, but my kind of more practical concern is what maybe is, if we can't do anything about this down on 69th Street, if we can't do anything about this tremendous fireworks display on 69th Street, is that sending a signal to other, because there's plenty of other people on the Color City beach that were shooting off illegal fireworks this year? I called dispatch a couple times, and I don't know if anything was done about it. But it seems like if people are allowed to put on this impressive legal display on 69th Street, is that sending a message to everybody else on the beach that, oh, it's okay? And how do we counter that? And I, I don't know, we should, they should be putting up a sign, or we should be publicizing somehow that this is illegal fireworks, or I.
Well, one thing to, we're going to cover a little bit of this, well, I just moved into this, well, we're going to cover this a little bit in just a minute, but one thing to recall is that I don't know that if somebody is shooting off legal fireworks in Color City, that's affecting in any way the behavior of somebody in Rhodes End.
No, I'm sure it's not.
Not about seven miles city.
Yeah.
And so, so I don't know, it might affect it in around where it's happening.
That's all I'm talking about.
And what has happened in Rhodes End may have no effect in, in, in La Coma, the, the lake area, Ocean Lake. That's one of the hard parts about our community is that we're, we're long, we're several mile long city. Okay, so the next part of the marketing we want to talk about is for.
What's an idea?
Huh?
What about if, what's an idea, just a, you know how the motels are on the beach? If they, say like after the fireworks is over, if they shine their beach lights on, would that deter people from doing fireworks after the time, I mean, if you light it up, it wouldn't be so conducive to exploding things in the dark? I know we have.
Light up the beach.
Light up the beach.
Yeah, we could put Klick lights.
Because people are walking anyway from wherever the fireworks were, it might even help them get along.
And I saw it in one of these articles that was referred to in here, that, that was, there was a couple of suggestions to make, one was lighting up the beach and similar, and the other one was texting violators to us at the 911 Center. That's a whole nother topic on how all that would work, but, you know, that, that would absolutely be your guys' call, but as many complaints as we feel that the PDA and the court enforcement about light and, you know, competing on other people's activities, it'd be interesting to see how, what the reaction to that would be.
Okay, the, the last part that I wanted to talk about is marketing our legal shows. We have two, we have one on the lake, and then of course we have one in Taft, and we have done that through posters, radio, and social media as well. We have not tried to combine the two, we have not tried to combine the two marketing campaigns. Based on what I've heard today, we'll look at a little bit on whether or not, on how to do that, so that it gets a consistent message. But of course, we call it Independence Day at Sletz Bay, and we have been building that up for the last four years, so it becomes a major, a major event. We did, we did look at what happens if we change the show, fireworks, or what happens if we eliminate the fireworks. There's two things that came out of that. One, we sent just a, it's a, an email out to other communities saying, asking questions, do you have it, what happens if you get rid of this, and so forth. The biggest hindrance to trying to change the show is cost, okay? It is much more expensive to do a drone show, to do a show on a, on a surface like the cliffs or Disney, maybe through what the Disney does, one with a fountain where they show it on, that kind of stuff. Any of those are much more expensive. For example, if I recall, it's pushing, I was just looking for my notes, it was pushing sixty to eighty thousand dollars for a nine-minute drone show of two, 200 drones, and you get four formations. We, for us, it's twenty-five thousand dollars for about a 25-minute show, that's about a thousand dollars a minute for a show that we have. So we did not put on, we did not put any kind of, proposing any kind of changes to the show. The other thing that, as I mentioned, we looked at, these are some of the comments that we had, the questions that we asked them. With this length, to the Oregon Destination Association member survey, it's kind of a listserv, with communities around Oregon facing wildfire and public safety, the policies around professional fireworks shows has been under review in many communities across the state. First question is, does your, or has your community invested in a professional fireworks display? Some of the comments that we received on that, this one's from Bannon, he asked Bannon, purchase the fireworks from Western Display, isn't that who we use?
Yes.
At, is Western Display. The fire department carries the insurance, last year, the, was the first year we went digital and decreased the risk. Let's see, let me go down to the next one. This is from Redman, we do have a professional fireworks display, no one wants to sign the contract for fear of the liability despite our insurance provided, so it defaults to the chamber and the VCD to sign it. Lapine wrote, we have a wonderful fireworks display for the 4th of July, and that adds to tourism, they come to Frontier Days and stay for the fireworks. Newport simply answered yes. Pacific City wrote, Pacific City did have fireworks this year, Nescun is the town that decided against an, or an organized show, Pacific City residents actually paid for half of the display, and the folks at the Pelican paid for the other half. Nescun has always had organized fireworks until this year, I can tell you that the illegal fireworks were almost better than what we were used to pay for.
Was it broader testing?
One of the reasons we gave up paying for them was that the company blocked off such large areas. Madras, yes, and it's put out by a nonprofit community, a nonprofit organization. The second question that we had was, if so, does the professional display add or detract significantly to your 4th of July destination tourism visits? Bannon answered, it does not detract, that is for sure, but what is up for date, a debate is if it adds. I think the question has always been, would people still come to Bannon in July, on July 4th if we did not have the fireworks? I believe the answer is yes. July is high season for Bannon. Redman answered, they did not give an answer to that question, neither did Lapine. Newport wrote, this display significantly adds to our destination on the 4th of July, there is a great spike in transient room tax collected during this time, there was a worry that we may not have them this year, and our office filled in many concerned phone calls of people who had already planned their trip to Newport just to see the fireworks over in Wicuna Bay. City didn't answer that question. Madras answered, not measurable of typical weekend guests versus guests for the 4th of July celebration and fireworks. If the fourth falls on any day from Friday through Monday, Lake Billy Chinook fills all of our hotels. If the fourth falls on Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, the hotels see a large occupancy number or fill completely. And then the third question that was asked is, if your community has discontinued its professional fireworks display, please share the reason that your fireworks show was discontinued, has the cessation of the professional show caused illegal firework activities to lessen or increase? Bannon wrote, we have considered discontinuing the show on several occasions, reason one through 10 revolved around funding, the cost of the product, the cost of insurance, the cost of the pyrotechnicians, I feel like we talk about it every single year. We discussed it in another time with the Oregon Department of ODFW. We discussed it another time when ODFW questioned if we were disturbing shorebird migration patterns, they believed the loud noise from the show disoriented the birds, we almost pulled it under the pressure of ODFW, but agreed to study and found that no birds were harmed during our show.
They're deaf.
Newport did not give an answer to question three, neither did Pacific City, and Madras reported, he reasons the Madras sparklers started the 4th of July in 1984 was to minimize fires started by legal and illegal fireworks, which was measurable against prior years of fire incidents, along with rallying the community and gathering and celebrating. So, that was just, we sent it out on that listserv, and those were the responses we received back. I might point out that we have been, each of the last four years, have been trying to make the 4th of July a bigger festival, we're considering adding other features to it this year. We have also been operating under the assumption, I don't know if it's the right assumption or the wrong assumption, but we market it this way, and that's come and see the show, leave your fireworks at home, and come and see the show. So that's, any questions?
Well, how, how do our fireworks, how does it work? Do we have some pyrotechnicians that we hire?
We do.
So, okay, so what about, is the legal permitted file has spectacular fireworks? Can the two work together so we could have like this guy who has spectacular fireworks work with our guys, so we have one show?
No, no, never asked that question, they're held in different locations, the, the city's fireworks are shot off the spit, these fireworks are shot within the city on the ancient colors.
Maybe you'd like to share the show with the rest of us up there first.
They have fun doing it right there.
I was going to say, though, if his is better than ours, why don't we just put the focus out there?
Don't, don't make too big, I mean, I was, I was right there, and they were right over at my heads, and the ones that go over the bay or from the Color City beach, it's a little bit of a distance, it was just more impressive to me, right under the skies thing, so.
Location, location. You know, you were mentioning marketing, and we were also talking about education in the local, and the thing that we didn't talk about is, you know, the people that come to visit, they stay in the RBC, stay in hotels and motel stations, good business, but is there a way to work with them directly so they can provide this education, you know, as we change our message?
We actually did that, started, started two years ago, when I got, got busy with this, and I worked with Jim Cooze, and we developed flyers, and then we had Surt and Rhodes End volunteers and stuff actually hand-delivered these and, and took them to the hotels just last year. On top of that, I had my officers go out and contact apartment manager, high-density housing complexes, and talk to the managers there and get that information posted with their residents, trying to minimize what we were seeing going on in the parking lots and some of the.
Chief, does that, does that, do those efforts include something that says, come down to Taft?
No, no, it was just a, it was specific to what was legal, what was illegal, and what defines.
So what I, what I, I guess the thought that Counselor Hinton has spurred in my mind is that perhaps the part that we need to work more with the lodging industry is to promote, to promote, come down to Taft. And it's not just fireworks, it's, it's all sorts of stuff that are not, you know, happened during the day as well, it's a festival, so we're trying to turn it into a festival, and you've been having some success with that. Interesting that, I'm sorry, Counselor, before you, it, one of the things Ed's noticed that we talked about is that it does change the dynamics. Four years or five years ago, we talked about how we thought it was a rougher crowd, we are now seeing more families that are.
So, into, including this, coming to Taft, does this mean we're going to have bus service, shuttle buses from somewhere?
They already have that.
Does it mean we're going to have a parking lot where our almost new park is in the Taft?
We already have that.
We do have that?
What about, did we touch vacation rental property management industry even in June? Because I'm assuming they've already booked for 4th of July 2020, and as they, you're trying to get them to provide in those bookings advance information of, you, thank you for booking, but let me remind you about, you know, fireworks or lack of, you know, again, trying to hit it early as bookings occur, this kind of stuff, I don't know what the cooperation, I guess my question is the cooperation level of hospitality in the industry.
Yeah, I don't know for sure about the, the hotel managers and the, and the BRD property management teams, all I can speak to, that we got specific feedback on was the apartment complex managers, we took, when I say we put out the enforcement flyer, I actually meant that, the flyer that Ed developed this last July, we got several hundred extra of those, and we blanketed the apartment complexes. One of the things. One of the things that they, a lot of the apartment complex managers informed us is that they put that information out to their renters, but they also put them on notice that if they were caught setting off illegal fireworks on their property, they would be evicted. They take a pretty, pretty firm stance with that, so. But as far as getting that message out to the property managers and the VRD managers and stuff, probably have to work harder with Ed and figure out, because I think the social media and getting those links installed on their websites about that.
But you know, the one thing too, Ron, that you were saying is that, you know, we have the one message of, you know, leave your fireworks at home and the other message of come to Taft. If that, you know, if that does get pulled together, then that might be an easier conversation to have with the VRD management companies and the hotels.
So, are we wrapping up here?
We are, we're ready to move on to the next one.
Cause anybody in the audience that wants to speak to, and if so, could you come up so the mics can pick up? Nobody?
Ken, if you want to.
And just observation of the discussion, you know, obviously we can't make decisions in the work session. Were there ideas missed or?
You know, I'm, David Jamison, live in Rhodes End. You know, I think all this is great discussion and then you're on the right track. I think, you know, there's a history of fireworks in this country, there's a history of legal fireworks in Oregon and that's created a culture of fireworks that in part is acceptable. What we've, what I've seen in Rhodes End is just a preponderance of the illegal firework activity specifically on the beach, but in addition in the neighborhood, and it is highly disruptive. And I think the perception in the public about sort of the city doesn't care or, is just because there's been over the years, a lack of action and that in and of itself is an action. And that creates this belief that, I'm not sure why not, that the city doesn't care. I don't think that's true. But I do think that putting more of those Rhino vehicles on the beach with the lights blaring would be a good thing. I do think that issuing violations, not a criminal, but a violation to at least a few of the more egregious parties that are setting things off would help to deter others from doing so and deter future activity. And I think the education campaign is, is very important, including something when people come into the city after they're visiting over the Fourth. This is a sort of final reminder.
Could I, wait, you, okay, could I ask David a question?
Okay.
Is that okay here? Weren't you one of the volunteers that were helping like on the Fourth handing out bags and, you know, cleanup bags and that kind of thing? Is there any, is there anything that you can inform us about that experience? Cause that might help in what we're talking about.
Two years ago, I mean, Janet Knight has organized a beach cleanup on July 5th for the past few years. Two years ago, we collected over 800 pounds of trash on July 5th. Last year it was more like 400 and something. We think the tide might have washed out quite a bit of it, but there is quite a bit of debris that's left behind as a result of setting off fireworks and as a result of a lot of people being on the beach. You know, so, yeah, that's certainly been an issue. Tried to make a dent in the day after, but people don't necessarily stay around to clean up after themselves.
And, but to that point, that's one very appreciative, but part of the putting on celebration and the cost of whatever it is, Explore Lincoln City also funds the cleanup of nonprofits, you know, so it's not just the 25,000 for the fireworks, there's another fund for cleanup. So, and I think Rhodes End has applied as others, you know, gotten grants for nonprofits to clean it up or have a chance to make money for the, for the organization.
They make zero.
Oh, no, well, let me, let me explain it again.
You just heard this discussion in the neighborhood meetings, but.
So, the, if I'm correct, Ed, Ed has a fund where he gets nonprofits to clean a section of the beach. Let me finish.
Okay, that's not.
If, if that's not true, please raise your hand. They get a stipend for doing that, of which includes the bags and all the stuff. So, there's no expense, shouldn't be any expense to the nonprofit. There, it's a fundraising opportunity. So, if Rhodes End Improvement hasn't taken advantage of that, you know, change your habit and, and take advantage of it. And I don't want, I'm very appreciative, as we all are, for the groups that are cleaning up. Ed, Ed, I'm, I'm looking at you, is that not the case?
No, that is the case, but if you want us to assist, you need to apply.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay. What you said might be exactly true from, from how we do things here. I know, just because I've said on the committee in the past, but the actual, the city grants, not, not Ed's grants, but REI has requested funding $120 and it's not a fundraiser, they don't make any money.
Okay, and, and we cut that off last year, we sent, cause you used to come to the charitable giving thing of the city. We said, go to, cause I don't think Rhodes End applied this last time. So, you need to go to Explore Lincoln City, not the fund from the city, not the, what are called outside agency fund. And you get 500? Is there?
I'm going by memory, so it's probably wrong, but I do believe that for this, let's pay cleanup, it was a lot of 500.
Yeah, and you supply the bags and everything else in the dump site, so, so I would suggest Rhodes End to do that as well. So, then it's a fundraising for other activities, accomplish what you're like.
And Janet Knight, who organizes the beach cleanup, actually had a number of sponsors contribute to our last beach cleanup on July 5th, Safeway, the tribe contributed, the city, I believe contributed, Councilor Hinton said $100 at that time. Yeah, would you say it would be a fundraiser?
Good question, I think. Do you see in Rhodes End, because we know down in Taft where the show is and we know we're seven miles long on the beach, do you feel that, like in Rhodes End, are they not attending the show down in Taft? They're just doing their own show or their own family activities up at the beach there?
Yeah, I don't know that I have enough information to actually speak to that point.
Okay.
Speak for myself and that we usually don't go to the.
To the.
Down in Taft.
Oh, down in Taft.
Not because we want to watch what's going on on the beach, don't get me wrong, but just because it is.
Can you see the one in the casino?
Yes, we tend to see the one in the casino.
You might watch that.
We sit on our porch and we watch that.
But that's the weekend.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. No, I'm just wondering how much, how much spread out is the Taft traffic for parking? I mean, I know a lot of people will wait down there just simply for that reason. Once the kids are grown up, you don't.
They park where I live and they walk the beach.
Well, funny you bring that up because the next topic is the gas tax, you know, it's a great segue.
There we go.
I have a similar story. I'm here, by the way. Thank you, Chief. Let the record show that Governor Oklitt has joined us. Thank you, everybody. Stephanie, I guess the nine o'clock we.
We had it next week, so I scheduled the physical therapy.
Judy's gonna start monitoring you, so. She'll be here. Okay, Mayor, I do need to make an announcement. We're really getting frustrated with our city council because we keep buying food and you guys don't eat it. So, please, help yourself, have some food.
It's too healthy.
One thing that is great, one thing that could be helpful to us is if we know ahead of time that you're providing food, because for years there wasn't, so now there is.
So, here's the general rule. If you're gonna be in a four hour work meeting, there will be something provided. If you, if your city council meetings begin prior to five, then we'll provide you something. On Monday nights, okay? So, there's food, so please, you know, make Ron look bad. Yeah. Okay. Gas tax. Richard had prepared an ordinance for this. I had decided not to put the ordinance in all of this because there's an awful lot of preliminary information and the, and the question that is still before you is, do you want to go forward? Okay? If you would like a copy of the ordinances, I will send them to you, but I wanted to give you just some preliminary information, financial information, where the city is. I've asked Stephanie to sit in if we have any questions on public works projects. And then finally, there are, there are some questions for you that will help us determine how you, how to go forward. And based on those, Richard's ordinances may work just as they are or they may need to be modified.
Ron, before we, could I just preface again for the record and the public, this, the reason this is even a topic is the budget committee made a motion that they're asked the, last year for council to look at as they were going through the budget and I think specifically into the road category, the streets and that kind of stuff, a lack of funding. And this was an idea the budget committee asked us to take a look at, so.
That's true. Thank you, Mayor. And I might give a couple of editorials on non-city stuff as we go through this. Preliminary information, US does have a gas tax. It is 18.14 cents per gallon. Here's my editorial, this was last raised in 1993. That's a long time ago for the non-tourism, no, and my real editorial, no wonder we have problems with federal bridges. Anyways, it's not indexed to the inflation, which has increased by 73% between 1993 and 2018. You see from my notes that came from, you know, where the sources are on these. I have put this up here so that anybody who's watching, don't have the paperwork in front of you, it's, it's up on, it's up on the board. The state also have, or the states also have gas taxes. The lowest is Alaska, which is .0895 cents per gallon. The highest is Pennsylvania, which is 58.7 cents. The US average is just under 30 cents. Oregon ranks the 11th highest in the state, or in the country at 34 cents per gallon. The gas price, I've also listed the average gas prices. The lowest is Louisiana. This includes taxes in it. This is the pumped price. Louisiana is $2.22. This is as of November 30th and it was provided by AAA. The highest is California at 38, or $3.80, 3.812 per gallon. The US average is $2.58.8. Oregon ranks the fifth highest at 3.194 per gallon. I also looked at gas prices on the average by county in Oregon. The lowest is Morrow County at 2.944 per gallon. The highest is Walla Walla, which at 3.499. The Oregon average is three, as we mentioned, is 3.194. Lincoln County ranks the 13th highest out of 36 counties at 3.239. Again, that country AAA.
Ron, just to help you, as for future, it's Willa.
Thank you. Thank you. I got past saying Willamette. I still get, I still get con, corrected when I say Monmouth instead of Monmouth. Thank you. Gas prices, I also looked at by the coastal counties in Oregon and you can see that Curry, Tillamook, and you can see them there, they range from 3.428 to 3.124 with Lincoln County in the fifth spot at 3.23. Oh, thank you, thank you. I've also, to put this into perspective, included information.
Before we go to that part, can you, do you have an actual breakdown of what the difference? You know, you've, you've, you have roughly 52 cents worth of the dollar, the price pump being for the Oregon state tax and the United States government tax. Is the remainder profit for the retailer?
I wouldn't call, I don't know that. The remainder is what the retailer charges. It's the, it's their retail price. I don't know what their breakdown is.
So, there's no taxing, there's no other taxing districts at a pump other than in or, in Lincoln County, in Lincoln City, the only two mandated tax price is the United States of .184 and Oregon .34. The remainder is to the discretion or to the market?
That's my understanding. Okay. Okay. All right. Now, just a little bit of looking at where this money goes, how much we get and so forth. On our street budgets, we have a total of all funds, which is $6.9 million, okay? Of that, 1.485 million comes from transient room tax. The motor vehicle revenue allocation is 627,663.
What is that?
That is the gas tax that gets distributed by the state.
And that's based on population?
That I believe is based on population.
Miles.
Is it miles? Thank you.
Miles of what?
Road.
Yeah.
Miles of paved road?
Yes.
So, how many miles unpaid road do we have?
I don't know.
Yeah, so where there is a potential increase in revenue, if we pave more roads.
I'm gonna double check on that.
I mean, right, but we'll be sitting on money.
There goes bar road. Go Judy.
I can't imagine that the revenue you get, because we're close to paving a road.
Right.
But I mean, if we have 17 miles of unpaid road, if, if, you know, over time, what would that be?
We'll check this out.
And all our paved roads counted?
If you look at the other revenue sources are 630,450 and the beginning fund balance for all transportation funds is 4,157,106. Now, what is significant about that is that what you really have for your operational and capital expenses on an annual basis is about 2.6, 2.7 million dollars. The fund balance, $4 million, that can be used up very quickly under just a couple of projects. And so, as you're looking forward into financing our roads, take out the beginning fund balance and just look at, we have about six, about 2.6, 2.7 million dollars for the maintenance and capital improvements on our roads, okay? Operation expenses, total expenditures, operation expenditures is 1.495 million dollars. Please note that that is only $10,000 more than the transient room tax. So, so the transient room tax is essentially paying for the operational expenses associated with our streets. Capital is 2.963 million for this year and reserved for future years is 2.4 million dollars. I might point out.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I have to go. I, I think this is something, just my general gut sense is, I'm really open to considering this. I like what Newport does. I didn't get elected to council to add more taxes on the people, so there's a lot of reservations, but I think something, I certainly wouldn't shut the door.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Now, the allocation of monies to counties and cities, these are... I'm not going to go through these, but this is where the money comes from, the state. So items A through J, that's where the state... That's what goes into the state's distribution to the cities. I might point out one other thing, that when you're looking at other revenues, that includes contributions of the cities. That includes contributions from the general fund.
To be clear, that sources of revenue is... That is included in one B, that motor vehicle revenue allocation, that's six hundred and twenty-seven thousand?
Yes.
Is in addition to the gas tax?
No, all of those make up the money that gets distributed to the cities.
That's what... Earlier, it was gas tax. Now it's gas tax plus a portion of all this other stuff? Which is dependent on our paper. Not population.
The next thing that I wanted to bring up as part of the prelimination, preliminary information, is how the state allocates the funds. The counties get twenty-four point three eight percent of their total revenue. The cities get fifteen point five seven percent of their total revenues. And ODOT has given us a forecast between now and 2025. We essentially go from six hundred and thirty-three thousand to six hundred and ninety thousand, with the biggest jump actually happening in 2021. That is due partially because in January, the gas tax allocation will go to six... Thirty-six cents per gallon.
That fifteen point five seven is based off of what? The six point nine million?
No, that's based on the total, which is several billion dollars that the state receives.
Oh, not based on our revenue?
No, it's based on the state's revenue. And of the state's revenue, fifteen point five or seven percent goes to the cities.
Based on the ci... It's fifteen percent of this sources of revenue, the A through J?
Yeah.
And that all of the cities?
All of the cities.
Get fifteen percent. And of that fifteen percent?
No, no, no. Fifteen percent is the pool.
Right. From that fifteen percent, our mile, our paved road gives us a piece of that fifteen percent.
That's exactly right. And so you can see that other than between twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, the increases are fairly modest in the amount that we collect.
Can you just back up a minute here? The jump from HB twenty-seventeen, you said it's point six three per gallon?
No, they're raising the state gas tax by two cents beginning in January.
Okay.
So thirty-six cents per gallon.
State gas tax.
Okay. Turning to page four. This is very difficult to read on the screen and a little bit difficult to read on the printed page. But essentially, what you're looking at is the... This is from the city's budget this year. This is our own projection of our revenues and expenditures for our street capital. And what is significant to note is that your fund balance is being depleted. Whereas in two thousand and twenty, the proposed... I'm sorry, two thousand and nineteen, the proposed ending fund balance, or the estimated was two point two million. By two thousand and twenty-four, it drops to two hundred and forty-two thousand. So I say you can't look at that when you're looking at its revenue sources. You have to just simply look at the amount that's coming in for current revenues. And so what you see in this is that the street, there's two types of capital we have. We embarked on a program five years ago to try to have all of our roads repaved over the next twenty to twenty-five years. We've estimated that cost would be about five hundred, six hundred thousand dollars a year. You can see that we really settle in at that five hundred thousand beginning in 2022. And also note that when you look out, we generally will settle in on all other street capital projects, and this includes storm drain, settling in at about eight hundred thousand dollars a year. That would be for new pavement, things like that, new curves, new gutters, new storm drain, things like that.
Of these capital improvement projects, which of the two thousand and nineteen, twenty ones are the first year parts of it or the second year parts of it? And, you know, we've had those two-year projects, you know?
You're going to have...
These are all the second year.
These are all second year?
Yeah. Still working. Hopefully, we won't go to a third year on...
Is that...
We're working on that. We'll get that at least.
Does it say that we're going to push them over again?
I hope not. I'm trying. We're trying to... Well, we bid, we're going to begin construction on number eight. And let me just take a quick look. All right, I'm sorry, on number five. We probably will end up rolling some of these over because the design timelines are long. They are longer than...
Two years?
Especially on the highway, on the highway project. They can be.
So it's just like, because when is it happening? Is that money that we think is going to be used won't, and then we'll push it forward? And then is there a two and a three that just aren't there?
This must have been already...
This came from a capital projects list. Those would have been ones that were completed, and we just didn't change the numbers.
Okay.
All right. With all of that, that's the preliminary information to give you the background of where we are, what we can expect, what our financial situation looks at. We're now moving into a discussion of the local option gas tax in Oregon. State of Oregon permits it. Twenty-eight Oregon local jurisdictions have adopted a local option gas tax. The lowest is Woodburne in Washington County, which is one cent per gallon. The highest is Portland, which is ten cents per gallon. You have two communities that are... Woodburne and Washington that have one cent per gallon. Tillamook has one point five cents per gallon. Milwaukee, Dundee, Happy Valley, Sandy and Silverton have two cents per gallon. And then Astoria, Camby, Covert, Coquill, Oak River, Springfield, Tiger, Troutdale, Vanetta, Warrenton, Multnomah County, Oak Ridge, Sisters and the Dals have three cents per gallon. Eugene has five cents per gallon. Two cities are unique compared to the others, and that's Newport and Reed's Port. They have a two-tiered gas system. For Newport, they charge three cents a gallon in between June first and October thirty-first, and then one cent a gallon between November first and May thirty-first. Reed's Port charges three cents a gallon between May first and October thirty-first, and they don't charge a local option tax between November and April thirty. Any questions on all that we've kind of discussed before I move on to the adoption of one?
I have a question. I'm just wondering, especially Reed's Port. How do... I don't know how much that would matter, but it just seems like going from three cents during those months down to zero and then back up again. I just wonder if there's... If they have to do an education with the citizens every year to say, remember?
It's like it goes with the season.
I don't know how many people pay attention.
Yeah, people don't pay attention.
That's a... I've talked to people about gas, and they're like, what does it matter? I'm like, okay. You know, like, this place over that place? I don't know how serious people take three cents of the difference over a tank of gas. Fifteen gallons over three cents, you're looking at forty-five...
When you're comparing it to the gas station down the street.
I was going to say, they do it by the gas stations, not by tax.
We don't have Florence on here, which always has consistently the cheapest gas.
But they don't have a gas...
They don't have a gas.
But they always have the cheapest gas, too.
That hasn't been moved the topic, though.
Okay.
Because that's the distributor.
So there's some money in here that goes to the distributor?
Oh, no. Not in this. When we go back, when we go back to what is the breakdown of three dollars and nineteen cents? Okay. As I mentioned, moving to the adoption of local option tax, the state permits it. You can adopt it through your charter ordinance resolution, and it does need to be approved by your elect... By the electors of the local government. Needs to be... Needs to be approved by them. The imposition of the tax is on the dealers. And I didn't print this up, but there's a long form that they have to submit every month identifying where all of the money goes for the different taxes. There is an exclusion. Any person who imports five hundred gallons or less. What is taxed is motor vehicle fuel, which includes gasoline, diesel. I'll just let you look at that. Now, I might point out, I didn't put this in here, but some of these cities have a different tax rate on diesel versus regular. The amount... The amount is what you designate as an amount per gallon. There is a licensing requirement for the dealers, and then there is a penalty for non-compliance. Okay. Again, I'm sorry, this is just totally unreadable up there, and it's difficult to read on this.
I just ask you about the penalty for non-compliance. Who monitors that?
The money is... I do believe, if I recall, that the money gets distributed to the state and then it comes back. And so your state is your first defense against non-compliance. I don't recall reading something that says whether or not the city can take any kind of audit action itself. Actually, in the draft ordinance, I actually just said it was a class... Because I thought there was a weakness in the Newport ordinance that didn't really tell you what the violation was. So I made a Class B violation, like almost everything else in our code, and then modeled after our other taxes. So like, if you don't pay TRT taxes, you don't remit, you don't import, so I have the same kind of enforcement language in this tax as I do in that tax.
So who's the enforcement or auditor of...
Well, the tax administrator is the finance director. And the finance director has all the powers.
Is that state... Back to Ron's point, is the city going to have to audit? And, Mr., what do they have to check?
Well, at least based on the Newport ordinance, the license tax is imposed on every dealer, and the tax administrator, which is the finance director, is authorized to exercise all the administrative power set forth in three nineteen oh one oh through three nineteen four thirty, which is the state tax. So we're basically saying the tax administrator has those kind of enforcement mechanisms.
But then that makes me ask the question, well, how does the city then get the records? And how do you compare it against what?
There's a provision that they are required to turn over our records. In fact, the ordinance in Newport even had a section about, maybe it's the excise tax, but if we need to look at the records, you've got to, in addition to paying the tax, you've got to pay our travel expenses if those records are kept out of state. Yeah, that's actually...
So why wouldn't this know it? For simplicity, we have the marijuana cannabis tax, of which we've...
We signed an IGA with the state to do it.
For simplicity, why wouldn't there be some...
If the state was willing to do that, that would be great. But again, I just modeled it after the Newport ordinance and...
And the problem I have with Newport, I think their issue is they don't even track their transit room tax, i.e. their road tour experience. So I'm betting, much to Councilor Hinton's concern, there's no checks and balances.
We can look at that. I just don't know that... I doubt that, you know, if there are others that have done it, then... One of the things that I did see in this, I just don't know who gets it, is that the report doesn't just include the amount, it includes the gas stations in the community. And it shows how much they pay. So I know it's being tracked. I just don't know who's tracking it. So to find out if it goes through the state to the cities, or if there's a separate reporting system that goes to the cities. So I gave you some examples of what the fuel taxes meant to the different communities. I looked at four of them. I looked for the ones that had somewhat comparable in city size, which I would think would probably be comparable to our gas usage. I did not have any records that says this is how many gallons we used as a city. So I looked at size, area, tourist base, and so forth. So I'm actually going to start on the third column with Milwaukee, and I'm just going down to the highlighted items. In two thousand and seventeen, Milwaukee has a... Is one of the cities that has a two-cent tax. They use, and this is April through December, these are the only records that I was able to find through the state. They use six million, three hundred and forty-six thousand, three hundred and fifteen gallons and received one hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars. The best example you have for what a full year effect is in two thousand and eighteen, they used seven million, five hundred and sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eight and received one hundred and fifty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty-two dollars. Then you can see what happens, happened in two thousand and nineteen through September. So for that time period, the total that they have received was three hundred and ninety-five thousand and eighty-five cents, using nineteen million, seven hundred and fifty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety. Warrenton, same thing. I'm not going to go over the gallons. Actually, I think I'll just drop to the bottom. They have received nine hundred and thirty-five thousand, three hundred and forty dollars over that time period, using thirty-one million, one hundred and seventy-eight thousand and ten gallons. And theirs is a full year of three cents per gallon. I'm going to the second column, which is Reed's Port. Again, Reed's Port charges three cents per gallon, May first through October thirty-first, and then doesn't charge... And then charges, that should say zero, they don't charge anything, November first through April thirty. And so when you look down at the bottom, the total amount that they have received over this time period is one hundred and forty-three thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-five cents, with four million, seven hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and forty-five gallons. Newport is the one that charges three cents, June first through October thirty-first, and one cent, November first through May thirty-first. This is probably the closest to us as far as the size of the city and the nature of the community. If you look at the bottom, they have received over this time period five hundred and nine thousand, nine hundred and two dollars and sixty-eight cents, and they use twenty-five million, one hundred and twenty-one thousand and sixty-nine cents. So those are just some examples of the revenue that has come in. You can venture to say that we are probably safe at saying that the estimate for us would be somewhere between one hundred and fifty and two hundred thousand dollars, depending on how you structure the tax.
Okay, three years, though.
No, that would be per year. So the questions that I have for the council is, do you want to propose to the electorate a gasoline tax? Do you want... If you do, do you want to propose a one-tier or two-tiered tax system? And question three is... And question three is, if you do, do you want, when do you want to propose the tax? Do you want us to bring this to you immediately, or do you want to bring it back as part of the budget process? And I, I might point out, there is some value in bringing it back as part of the budget process, because we're, with our next discussion, we'll have three different rates that we're talking about changing in the, that have come up over the last few months. We're looking at trying to create a flat tax, or a flat rate for the sewer, now a gas tax, now a, an excise tax. You also have a lot of projects that we have talked about that are pushing five million dollars. All of these things right now are being considered outside the budget process. There is great merit including those in the budget discussion, so you can see how it affects everything else.
I guess, good information, so thank you. That helps, a couple of questions that we have is, you know, how to implement and monitor. But for me, the discussion, why it's even on the table besides the question committee bringing it, or is, I hear, as many of you hear, congestion, and road congestion. You know, and then it's forced on us, is what, what are you going to do about it? Is kind of how it's presented. I have turned around and said, whoever's in my face on it, said, well, what do you think we ought to do about it? And help me out here. Well, once we take a bypass off the table because of practicality and extensive, then, then you're looking at, you know, our own Main Street, which is a state road. But I keep thinking of trying to bleed some traffic off one-on-one. And we've talked at having our master, transportation master plan, that road from Rhodes End to East Devil's Lake, across the north part of the city, that would catch the villages and the school and dump into East Devil's Lake. That would bleed traffic away from Logan's Road, intersection with Gom's, West Devil's Lake, right there at the DMV, and that north part, where it's often congestion. The other is south, you know, Taft, and we've talked about, you know, bridge line, or hill line, or whatever you want to call it.
Foothills.
Foothills, thank you, along the east side of Nelska, again, cutting into East Devil's Lake. That's also on the map, so it's eaten on the map, but at least it's a starting point. So if I were going to impose a gas tax, and that's an if, my appetite would be a specific place, not, not a general fund as this goes, that it would be to build a fund or add to those specific areas. Because I think everyone, every voter, would agree with you that congestion is a problem, and it happens in the tourist season, so if you taxed and let tourists assist you, and then drop it or whatever. Now, looking at the numbers, it's, it's not going to pay for a road, not at all, but it's a starting point. You, you think again and use urban renewal funding sources. Now you've got two ways. Now, when you go to the state for assistance, you've got some real money, and you're not just begging for state money, you've put in dedicated money towards these two roads, asking for help. So that, and I, I didn't realize it was a requirement to go to the electric, but I've always said, you know, that's where it's got to go, because they're the ones complaining, you know, about congestion. So if you don't want to pay for it, because nothing comes, the feds aren't going to send you money in the state unless you pay for it. So I would have the discussion, any kind of discussion, around a gas tax, have a, have a specific fund for specific roads. Go ahead.
I have thought about those two specific roads with the gas tax money, and it isn't enough to do anything really meaningful.
You got to speak up.
Centuries, but, and I was, and urban renewal, and I had that same thought for that same road, you know, the buses are driving, the neighborhood's crazy already, but that would take, I'm not sure that somebody else's property still is purchasing or annexing or something, because it's county, that part of the road that you're talking about. So that's, I'm just adding up all of the pieces of the process, besides just getting tax pay or support. And then the other foothills, that's annexation and some other.
Private accounting?
Yeah, it's the same, it's kind of, they're mixed bags, but they're kind of similar in, in both of those roads, and I don't have an opinion about that, I'm just saying that, you know, it's complicated, but it's always going to be complicated. So that's not a plus or minus, it's just a comment, but I'm just worried that that, if I had heard it right, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, perhaps, if we did it, if we, if we followed Newport's example, and those roads are in the millions and millions, I think the foothills one, that actually, didn't it have a, did it have a price tag attached to it, through that, through the?
Four million, yes.
Yeah, four million. So, I mean, I like the idea of having a dedicated fund for those two roads, and how the money can be gathered from others.
Yeah, and that, that's really the point, and, and I think even going to the electric, you've got to market why you're, you're doing it. And this is not the answer, or, you know, this is not going to fund the answer, but if your answer is bleed off congestion, absent any other suggestion, then when do you start? Well, today better be a plan. To me, it's like solving the purse issue. I mean, it appears like people like to go after millions and billions of solving the problem, rather than hundreds of thousands or one million. And, you know, if you don't start, you'll never get there anyway, and expenses are going to be more expensive, so.
The language in the Newport, I think it's from the Newport, I don't remember where I stole this, because I think I wrote this in March, it talks about the net revenue shall be used exclusively for services and materials associated with design, construction, reconstruction, improvement, and repair of roads, streets, bike and pedestrian pathways, other multimodal transportation systems for the city, for which the city owns, operates, or maintains, desires to own, operate or maintain, is contractually legally obligated to operate or maintain, or for which the city has accepted responsibility under an IGA. So it's very broad, doesn't mean that you can't say that you have a budget process, you're gonna, you're gonna earmark it, but you're essentially talking about creating matching funds for grants.
I did not find, in the research I did, anything that prohibits you from identifying a mis-tax to a specific project. It can be narrowed, or it's at least in everything that I've found so far.
Can it be, you identify a certain area, can you change it by budget transfer, whatever, suppose we don't?
Yes, because you're adopting it by resolution ordinance. I've, I've done this before in, in another community, not a gas tax, but something similar, where we identi, we, the campaign for the election was that you were going to be using it for specific purposes, including, the ordinance that I've actually adopted it identified those purposes, and they could be then changed if you felt necessary.
There's a, there's a catch-all in here that talks about, it's subject to the local budget process, so I think you're always going to have that caveat, but I think you're going to say it's for road, street purposes, including maybe these specific projects, but subject to the local budget process.
I would caution, whenever you go to the voters, you know, they, hard to believe, don't trust government, and if you tell them one thing, that it's, paint this picture, that it's to bleed off congestion, da-da, and then there's a caveat that says, well, depending if the sun comes up, you know, that's not going to, I'm not going to vote with that. So I guess, you know, you'd, you'd have a hard time, I think, passing any kind of.
Unless the tax sunset it on the development of those two roads. I mean, if it's set like that, it could get off the hook.
That could be so far.
I know.
I mean, I, you know, I think, again, it's the marketing, having to be real careful with saying, we're not doing it for our own enjoyment, you know, we're not going to realize it in the near future.
Right.
But yeah, I, I would agree with you, at some point it drops off, there probably will be gas then anyway, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think you have to start, there's always the piggy bank to, for the future. And I think as voters, I would want to see that, yes, we're looking at getting congestion on five oh one oh one. When I have to go to work, I don't want to have to leave an hour early just to get through town, you know, which normally takes me maybe fifteen minutes. So I, I don't know if you want to just say maybe a portion of the tax will be dedicated to, if the whole thing's dedicated to, but if we're looking at trying to get more paved roads, you know, I.
Well, we, the transit route tax, I think, is a good example. It was done at different times and different amounts, and it has different criteria. So down the road, you know, it, it, as our whole group's comment, maybe people aren't looking at gas taxes, if something else comes up, then you can have, again, another vote of people for another sense worth to go to the more general, but I'd be leery.
Just, if I could put in an editorial, the most interesting thing to me about all of this is the fact that the federal government has not changed the gas tax since nineteen ninety-three. Now, there's a practical implication to that, because it means that more and more of the construction of roads and things like that are being pushed down farther and farther to the states and the local governments. You know, nineteen ninety-three, I was working in Maryland, and that was a, you know, federal funds that came through the state were a large part of that. You've just seen over the years that the federal state has not had the political will to change that, which means shifting the burden to, down.
Think about how many vehicles the government operates, you know what I mean, as well, you know, the whole military and environmental thing, it's not environmental, but, but I mean, the consumption of the fuels, the fun, the thing, I mean, what is the, what do you think consumes more fuel? The military complex or the consumers? It's a big question, when you're looking at it from that federal level, who's using what, and, and why wouldn't they? Well, because they're consuming probably more than, you know, what we know. So I have some questions. You know, when I travel, I don't necessarily fill up in Lincoln City at all. I know where there's cheaper gas, and so how many other people are doing that? And so I think we, exactly, we all do that. And so when we look at Newport, Newport's even cheaper than our gas, and so that real breakdown of, is the two dollars and eighty-five cents seriously the difference of price to the retailer? You know, like, what really is the price of, why is our gas higher here in Lincoln City than Newport? That shouldn't be ten, fifteen cents difference already.
How can you find that?
But you don't control that.
I understand that. What I'm, I'm not, my point is, we're going to raise it more, which could further push people away from filling up in town, knowing that it's going to be more, and we'll go fill up other, other places. So my money isn't going to Lincoln City. I, I'm already hesitant already, and so as, looking at it from the voter's perspective, here we are, they don't know. Who knows what people know what the money breakdown is? I think it's important to say, hey, eighty-five cents is for taxes, the rest is the, whatever. You know, if we're going to sell this to people, we need to know what we're selling as far as the money breakdown. I think it's important to say, hey, eighty cents is taxes, the rest is the retailer, and now we're trying to do two cents for us.
Right.
Right? So I think that's the, the.
Well, I, yeah, I don't disagree, and your marketing's to push, yeah.
Right. And then knowing that real consumption is probably a help, too, you know, what is Lincoln City, we have.
How many gallons?
Right, how many gallons, period, I mean, you know, it varies differently, you know.
Council, I would still, your points are well taken, and I guess, whether it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year or fifty thousand dollars a year, it's more than we have now.
Sure.
And it's going into a pot, in, in my vision, anyway, it's a matching fund for the big bucks.
Sure.
And whenever I worked for communities in housing, they all wanted to, and Lincoln City was famous for this, what kind of federal monies you're going to bring for housing? My first question was, what have you done besides spend the federal money or state money, you know, and, so it made me an issue. So that's where I'm sensitive, as to someone looking, looking right, big checks, the feds or states, what are you doing? This is different than another community, because we all have needs.
Right.
And, and I'd start at any, any point.
I was just going to piggyback on what Riley said, though, that if, if he goes elsewhere outside of the city to buy gas, and others do, then how, how do you get people to vote for something if residents already are going elsewhere for their gas develops?
Because they're going to stick somebody else. I mean, there's always, the answer, why the cigarette taxes, the sin taxes, because I don't smoke, you know, let somebody else pay it. And I think as Newport looks at the others they're doing during the tax season, because, you know, the guy from Idaho.
The tourist season.
The guy from Idaho isn't driving back to Salem to go out and come here, or to Flo.
But they're not, but they're not voting for it either, though.
Granted, that's why you vote for it, you know, to stick those guys, because you're going out of town anyway.
That's why I think two-tier would work, because how many people live here but are angry at the tourists that cause our prices to go up? So this way, they're saying they can pay their share.
Yeah, but then they're going to say, well, I own a sticker that says I'm a resident, and I don't have to pay the one cent difference. I don't want to pay fifteen cents a fill-up. That's what we're talking here, fifteen cents a fill-up, forty-five cents a fill-up.
I think what we're really talking about is establishing a fund for that project or for roads, whether through this gas tax or otherwise.
Yeah, you've got, you've got to bring it right back to the congestion, what brands are more congested.
If, if that's the purpose of, of, for me, right, right.
What will the electric car people say?
And that's the thing, too, is now we have electric tax.
You're, you're designating only gas cars. My father used to say, well, it's cheaper to buy gas than a new car. Okay, but.
And that's what I have here, is electronic vehicle tax.
And that's why, that's why your gas revenue went, or your shared revenue went up in, what, what year was it? This year, two thousand seventeen.
Twenty-one.
It wasn't the gas tax, it was the registration, it was up in the state, and, and you're right. But we don't have that answer yet, so, you know, other thing you could tax, or we, we don't have, it's a state registration, state license, so you don't think you can.
Just to go out there, we do have marijuana tax money, that we get to decide what to.
Yeah, well, you're putting it towards two developments of parks, the public screams pretty high about it, so let's get those built.
I was just going to say, the idea of going electric, a lot of people are considering that.
Tesla's the number three selling car in California.
Did you see that truck? Okay, anyway, the, the point is, is if we go this far, then we should establish a bank of electric car plug-ins, and then people would have to pay at the top, at that.
At electricity chargers, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if we're looking, if we're looking at transportation, you know, transportation and how we're going to try and gather a little, pull money from all the, we should do that, and we should be the hub on the coast for electric outlets.
Right, yeah. Do, do we have a way which to rate how many, I don't even know what you call it, kilowatts we've given out?
Yes.
And so what's that amount, and how do we get reimbursed or charged, or, you know, I know different companies have different ways, you don't have to fill up, but it's consumed, so there's a price at some point.
What we have, the information we have, and I'll send this to you, is. What we have, the information we have, and I'll send this to you, is for our own electric hookup stations.
Do we have how many?
Eight.
Allison, you remember how many we have?
We have four, and each one has two chargers, so we technically have eight charging.
Right. And then the Tesla ones at the mall, how many are there?
I think there are.
Ten. Two that are not dedicated.
Tesla has two locations that I'm aware of here in Salashan.
They've got a Salashan.
Are those free or do you?
They're free.
Well, well, free.
They're Teslas, so whatever Tesla charges that, but it doesn't, they charge nothing.
It's the way in which you plug it in.
There's a lot of information about EVs, and I'm hoping to be able to finish a memo to present over the December 9 meeting. And, yeah, we were the first on the coast to have EV charging stations that were publicly owned. We do have some information about how many kilowatts and what, how well they've been used. Obviously, they've increased because the market availability of cars has increased. But there is a cost to providing free chargers, and so Jeannie Sprague with Parks and Rec is responsible for the maintenance of those chargers, and so she and I will be bringing information to you to make some decisions about, do you want to continue, do you want to downgrade, just because Tesla and others have taken more of the market share for chargers? And so it could be that the government doesn't need to participate as much, if at all, but that will be up to you all to weigh the information and make a decision.
Salty air, electrical connections, what could be the problem?
Allison, Tesla is dedicated to a Tesla vehicle, though, from my understanding.
Teslas can charge at many different types of stations, but they usually will charge at Tesla stations because of cost and because of availability, because they're networked.
No, but the Tesla stations are just for Tesla vehicles, correct?
The Tesla stations are just for Tesla.
Yeah, that's what I thought, okay.
So, but then what about the home user, is charging at?
Or the BRD.
Or the BRD.
Or the motel.
There's charging there as well.
Well, they're paying half power.
And how are we going to know that?
Yeah, there's no.
Do you know what I mean?
So there's always leakage.
The only information we have is our, is from our charging stations.
I understand, but that would be the way in which to get around. I'm not going to pay your road fee, I'm just going to charge it at my money size.
Totally different question. You said that Jeannie Sprague is maintaining these?
Parks and Rec is responsible for the EV charging stations.
Really? That just doesn't make sense.
No. They're in our public parking lots, and they're responsible for our public parking lots. So, oh, we're public parking lots. I'm sorry, that's a leak between. Anyway, go ahead.
So, then, back to the questions, you know, not making decisions, but, you know, we've accomplished what Budget Committee, we have a work session on it, a lot of information.
Good.
I think Ron said if you want to go forward type thing, work it into a budget session issue, it'd mean the election, vote of the people.
What does that cost if we're talking budget? To go to a vote of the people, what does it cost?
Well, it's like, it's your May special districts election time.
Thirty thousand.
Yeah.
Kathy may have that answer.
If you go during the regular election, there's no charge, but if you have a special election, then that's when you get charged.
So the May and the November elections, when they have those general and small, that costs nothing. It's if you do something in February or April.
And it depends, if you do the special election in February or September, I think there's another month. It depends on how many other bills there are that are going before the voters, then they split, they split the cost.
There could be a cost that all of us, the staff, would be prohibited from taking positions, though we're not prohibited from providing information. And so there would be a cost associated with whatever type of information you want to get out to the public.
And it's fair to say, Council in 2009, from the bench, passed a gas tax, 3 cents gas tax, right in the middle of recession. It was initiative process, got enough votes, earned enough signatures, it was on the ballot, overwhelmingly defeated, overwhelming. One, it was a crack for money, and it was right in the recession, so it shouldn't have been a surprise at all. But, you know, that's the history of a city. And the reason it was done, then, is our call, the state put a moratorium on cities doing gas taxes. So it was also jammed in quickly before that moratorium. So there is a history, and that's why I'm sensitive to, you know, specific.
Yeah.
Is that the testis?
Right. Well, that might just be here with, here with.
So what, you know.
So really, there's two questions that are before you. Do you want the staff to work on this? And then the second is, do you want us to do it as part of the budget, or do you want us to do it outside the budget?
And what does doing it as part of the budget mean? Since this wouldn't be a fund for, unlike how it presented.
If you, if you were to, if you were to look at it as its own fund or specify its purpose, the budget part is not that big of a deal. If you were to look at it to try to add it to the budget, it becomes a bigger deal. But the other thing that you, the other thing that you want to take a look at, and this is why it's helpful to do it with the budget, what is the cumulative effect that you're going to have on residents with revenue increases that you're proposing? So, so it's, it's, you don't just consider this in an isolated from every other proposal that we have beforehand. So it is very helpful to look at the cumulative effects of all that we're talking about.
I need more information.
What?
What's, what's really, what would it be? Well, how, how much are we consuming, you know, and I really want to know what that breakdown is.
So you'd want, you'd like to know what the pot at the end of the year would be looking to dollar amount. Does it, I have to ask, does it matter?
No. I mean, I don't, I don't know, just saying what I would like to see. I'm not prepared to say, yeah, spend time doing it.
I don't know that we can get the data from, you know, Newport or other entities, because they may have in their ordinances that they can look at the dealers' records, but I'm sure they're not going to share it with us. The question, you know, the question I have to look at on this is that, as I looked at the state records, I was looking at these specifically for these communities. I did not try to look at whether or not I can get access to the state records for Lincoln City, because what they have is all of the gas stations and how much they pay on a monthly basis. I don't know if that's public information, I don't know if I can get my hands on it, but it's worth, it's something I'd have to check with the state.
Maybe they couldn't give it to you by gas station, but they might be able to give you the cumulative, full count.
Perhaps.
And I have a question, too, if you want to.
I'm just wondering, did you all decide what, the second question up there, or do you want to, you like the tiered approach?
I like the tiered.
I like this tiered.
I like the tiered approach. As far as if we go forward with this and now to try and explain and talk to people, what makes more sense? That, I have a question, too.
I guess the thing, what it means for me to build it forward, what this would really mean for the staff time, Richard has done the yeoman's work of it already in putting together the ordinances. We'd need to bring that back to you for some tweaking, some things like that. It would also be trying to define more of what the financial impact would be for the city. I would bring back at varying levels, zero, one, two, three, four, you know, cents and so forth. It would start to prepare the information for Alton, for informational campaigns. Those are the things that, what it means to begin to prepare to do, to bring it back to you.
I have a question, too, about the urban renewal, Ben, we're still trying to sort things out, like where the boundary is and all of that kind of thing. And there has been some discussion already about that road, and could it be included in the urban renewal? And that was without this discussion about a gas tax and how it can be dedicated, but, so I think, I guess the question is, is a meeting is coming up, and does this fit into that kind of discussion under projects for the urban renewal?
I think it's always good to talk about alternate funding sources when you have large capital improvements that are planned and needed and some priority, but I don't think that a decision on a gas tax would, it's helpful for the urban renewal discussion, but I don't think the urban renewal discussion is dependent on any other outside discussion. It's either, we either want to do tax increment financing to fund projects in that area of town, or we don't. Whether there's a gas tax or not, I don't think would make a difference for the urban renewal discussion. It might be helpful for the gas tax to think about, oh, well, it's only this much money, can we really do anything? But leveraging with urban renewal or with some other fund, you know, that discussed.
I think it does matter, and I think it matters because we're talking about boundary and if it's, if it, I don't know.
I mean, I don't, I don't know how $200,000 a year is going to make a impact on a $40 million.
Exactly. That's what I'm, that's what I'm thinking, too. It's like, how am I going to sell $150,000 against a $14 million project?
And you need to remember that these projects are subject to lots of things, you know, annexation, condemnation, all kinds of things. And if you say too specifically, well, if you say too specifically, this money will be used for this, I don't want to be in a situation where 10 years from now, we now have to refund this money because we collected it and said it was for this specific purpose. So the kind of telling people what the purpose is, it's for building roads and multi-modal transportation, it is not for use of, this is in Newport, too, it's not for use of city administration costs, city personnel, it's not for that. But you've defined it not so narrowly that you have to refund it if you don't go forward with that project.
And really, I think the urban renewal area that we are talking about is Road Center Area A. The Area B, which would happen anywhere for three to five years later, would include the area for the roads. So I don't think it's not necessary now. At this point, if Council finds the plan acceptable and adopts it, then the area gets set. Then we start talking about what other acreage do we need to pull in in order to accomplish this road.
Okay. It's a priority, that's what I'm saying.
Again, I guess, Council, I'm concerned that you're focusing on the end, meaning it's not going to happen in our lifetime, you know, quite frankly. So.
Maybe yours.
Maybe yours, but not mine. But I feel obligated to get something started, because we know it's only going to get worse, because you of all people see the influx of people coming to Lincoln City, and I can tell you, it's not just the current residents that complain about congestion. It's the visitors and the new, and they, because they visited us in the wintertime, and they're shocked in the summertime. And they're in my face.
I'm not, I'm not opposed to this, I'm just trying, you know, as we're trying to sell this, for some if, maybe then situational, if this, that, that, and that come together, then it will be used for that.
So, so again, again, my question back to the person who's in my face is, okay, if not this, what?
Well, that's what they say, well, you're the one who's been elected. Do you know what I mean?
And that's this.
And then, but, but I mean, really, and so, and yes, there's people who've been coming for 20 years that say, it wasn't like that.
Right.
Well, yeah, you're right, it wasn't like that. It got out that it doesn't rain all the time, so, you know what I mean? So, you know, so it's just trying to get, for me, more information, I can say, yes, and, yes, and, yes, and.
Take a market.
Right. It's not.
Well, Mr. Mayor, there's a thing that we can do as a staff, is that we know it has to go before an election. We can look at the upcoming dates, work our way backwards, so you have timeframes that you know you have to work within. We can start putting together on what is, what's involved in putting together an informational campaign for an election, and then more information about.
Supportive data.
Supportive data on what kind, what kind of funds that you would want to expect. So we could at least go that far in gathering information.
And I think, I'd say Richard's point is a good one, just, you know, maybe tighten it up some from Newport, but, you know, where it's not in due and adverse of having to refund, makes sense.
And so a little bit of what I've heard is you do a consensus basis, like the two-tier system rather than one-tier system. So I got that part of it, and then as we gather, if I can get the number of gallons, then I can make it any two pennies, three pennies, and make those kind of projections.
Your question number three, I just want your clarification, you talked about proposing it when, immediately or part of the budget? And then previously you said inside or outside the budget? Is immediately out inside and part of the budget outside?
In truth, this will probably end up in timing-wise with the budget anyways, because we are in the budget season. You're going to be talking about your, you're going to be talking about your priorities next month, your first meetings with Budget Committee, you're going to, you're going to have a preliminary meeting that's going to be probably the first of February. So, and when I, and what I don't know, and I have to, Kathy will have to help me out on this, when I still look back from election dates, work my way back. So my guess is, in all likelihood, this information is going to be coming to you roughly at the same time as budget information.
So I'm looking at elections, May, November, so you're looking backwards. Are you thinking in your mind to prepare it for a May election?
Not, not, I know not May of 2020. I don't know. What I'm going to look at is just May, November, go back, how many weeks are there in preparation before things have to be filed and everything?
I don't think we want this in November.
No, no, no.
No.
I'm not talking about dates, I'm talking about month. Could be 2020, could be 2021, could be 2022. I just need to go, if you're going to do an election in November, what's the timeframe for getting everything ready? If you're going to do an election in May, what's the timeframe for getting it? I'm not looking at year, I'm just looking at the month.
And there's been some studies, I don't know if it was Portland or Metro or somebody who, or some parks or whatever, where they had determined which month, I think it was May, which was better to actually get the community to support something. But I could be wrong, but I think so. But I'm just saying, this November, we have elections nationwide, countywide, citywide, is not a good time to get the attention of the public, to educate them about this issue just specifically.
I'm not looking at a year, I'm just looking at a month and what is involved in being ready for whatever election, month, year, whatever election year, if you want to go forward.
So that's still a question, you know, it's to, next step, this isn't, because we're not making decisions, gas tax, no. But to go the next steps, to flush it out, and it's a viable, at this point, still shows its viability, and so you want to pursue it?
So, yes, but then you say we're talking about it in the budget, like we're going to build it into the budget, but we haven't put it out to the voters yet, or?
No. So I think Ron's point is, you know, when we look at the budget, we look at all the things that are going to be impacting, we've, like Sid, probably a flat tax sewer fee. So some people, if we go a flat.
Lot of taxes.
Flat rate.
Sewer fee, flat rate fee for sewers. So that's, you know, again, it's not a revenue, if, if a decision is to keep it at a more specific road, then it's not going to fall into the budget revenue as to be able to expend on an annual basis.
Okay.
So, but, but I think his point is, okay, 3 cents here, 50 cents there, $25 here, you know, as a budget committee, you'd want to look at that, what you're doing to your residents.
For future growth.
Well, just the impact. Well, just the impact of. Miles, you've been sitting there, I know this is an issue for you. Is there something not said that you, you don't, not from there, because you're so soft-spoken. We need the mics.
Here, there's a spot over here. Here, Miles.
I fully support a gas tax because I believe that the highway is to capacity when the tourists are here. And I further believe that there should be a roadway built east of 101 so that the community of Lincoln City can get around during that time. And often there is an accident or something that closes 101. And if we could get a road east of the highway that connects to East Devil's Lake Road and then connects to, on the other side of the golf course, to the bus area, it will be essential to connecting the city and being good for growth. And then we could have an industrial park that is really attractive to people that want to relocate a small business here. And unfortunately, I like the city back in the 50s when there weren't people here. But that isn't the case anymore. Origin is growing and we have to be able to take care of those people, provide employment opportunities and prosper. And so I am fully aware of the thing and I'd like to be able to see it in my lifetime get going. But if not in my lifetime, it should be done. Thanks, Miles.
Thank you. He's hoping to have a long life.
Okay. You want to take, you need to take it quick. Break, facilities break, or you're right. We could, because you can get up and, oh, we could just.
We just know you want a break because you're trying to be polite. We've been going, you've been sitting.
All right, let's go with excise tax then. Keep, keep this thing rolling.
Would I give you one of those?
Yep.
Okay. Excise in general or?
Not exercise.
Okay. Again, you've got the notes that I'm working off of. You've got, I've got it on the board. Like before, there are some pages that are a little bit more difficult to read, almost impossible on this, but on your paper, it's a little bit easier. Mayor, you ready?
Yeah.
All right. The Oregon Legislature in 2016 adopted legislation that enabled local jurisdictions to adopt the construction excise tax, the purpose for which and the restrictions for this excise tax is for affordable housing. Okay? The city can adopt to a one percent, up to 1% of the permit value on residential construction, no cap on the permit value of construction and industrial construction. And the breakdown of it is, off the top, cities can take 4% for administrative costs. After that, it's distributed 15%, goes to the Oregon Housing Community Services for providing down payment assistance. 50% goes to creating affordable housing. And then 35% goes to affordable housing programs. What's that?
Statewide or local?
The O H C S is, I believe it's, if I understand it, is statewide.
35% and 35% that all goes?
The 50 and the 35% go local.
Okay, that's what I wanted.
The 15% I believe goes to state down payment assistance. Correct?
Yeah, I had an idea to ask on that. I don't know if it's like we get it back allocated or if it.
I believe it does.
Goes to the state pool.
I thought we, I pay them and they.
I think they're required to send it back.
That would be nice.
Okay, there are nine cities and/or counties within the state that have adopted this. The first one to do it has been, uh, their efforts led to a halt in doing this for several years. They went through some legal proceedings. It was then again, as I mentioned, approved to allow it beginning in 2016. Portland, Corvallis, Cannon Beach, Hood River, County Hood River, Newport, Milwaukee and Medford are the other communities that have, that have adopted this excise tax. You can see on just this chart, I won't go through it, um, on what these other communities done, other than to point out the very bottom row, which is the expected revenue. Portland was expected to receive $8.1 million. I left off Hood River County, I'm sorry, I don't have that. Hood River City is 165,000, Corvallis is 660,000, Cannon Beach is 96,000, Tillamook County was 300,000, and Newport is somewhere between 100 and 150,000. Now, I took, um, this year, we keep a monthly track of the building permits that are issued. This is January through October. So it's 10 months out of the 12. Right now, under residential, the valuation we have is $10,202,892. At 1% would be 102,029. Commercial value is $5.
Where are you?
I'm reading off of this. Okay. Residential, uh, total value of the building permits that have been applied is $10,202,892. 1% of that is $102,029. Okay? Commercial, so far this year, so January through October, is $5,823,545. Okay? Total, 1% of that is $58,235, or a total of $160,264 that we would have collected this year. Now, so when you're looking at Newport's of 100, 150,000, I didn't go back to look at Newport's budget. This was part of the ordinance that they eventually adopted. That's probably a pretty fair amount, probably depending on, as I look at the year, at the last five years that we've had and the building permits cycle that we've been on, 100 to 150,000 is probably a pretty fair estimate, or higher than we have been in the last few years, so. Okay. Okay. Wanted to just mention a little bit about our own efforts to remind you of our own workforce housing efforts. Incidentally, one thing I could not find in the state statutes is, is, is there a definition of affordable housing that goes across the state? Or do we get to define what affordable housing is? Because if you recall, some of our efforts have not been down to the lowest level, they've been what we call workforce housing. So that's some information I have not been able to find yet.
It's actually in 1533, they added a definition of affordable housing, which means housing that is affordable to households with incomes equal to or higher than 80% of the median family income for the county in which the housing is built.
That was 1533, is that a state?
It's.
Wait, you can't have louder and.
Thank you. Thank you. This is why I have a good attention. Yep. Catch the things that I missed.
Can someone read it out loud so?
Affordable housing means housing that is affordable to households with incomes equal to or higher than 80% of the median family income for the county in which the housing is built.
Is it affordable or workforce?
It says affordable.
And that's, that's the 309. That doesn't make sense.
Weird.
That's weird. That's all the state.
So there's.
Equal to or higher.
Affordable, yeah, well, that's what we've, when you've been going against workforce and affordable, 80 to 120, I thought was affordable. And then 60 to 80 was affordable.
Work vice versa. Workforce is the.
Sorry.
And that blows the floor.
And then we, because we had issues because Lincoln City is not the same as the county, right? So, and that's the state, and that's, but that's to the state, or that's state, county, the county.
That's the state's definition.
197309, that's the exclusionary zoning prohibition.
Inclusionary zone?
Yeah, inclusionary.
Okay.
And that's the, that's the section that was amended with this, the later section is the section on excise tax.
So they're saying what is affordable is 80% of median family income. So anything 80% and higher is not considered affordable, I think is what they're saying.
That's what I said too.
Thank you. Okay. You have on page two and page three, information about our budget. Our primary sources of revenue for our workforce housing fund is leasing income, transfers from the general fund and sale of properties. Okay? Again, important to remove the beginning fund balance, so you're just looking at what is the income that you're bringing in. And it is about 117, $117,700 for this year's budget is what you're bringing in, with most of that 100,000 coming from the general fund itself. Page three.
This is 100,000 from the general fund. And again, since we're on that, how many properties again is the lease income based off of?
I've got to start from the bottom. Well, no, no, I'm tired. This is, this is three. Yeah, this is, these are the city owned houses.
Right. And, and of those, again, are they at market? These are for city, these are to entice employees or to encourage?
These are to help employees when they move to the city.
Right. And that's, they're below market, correct?
Not, not as of, not as of yesterday. We raised it so that they were at market value.
And is there a time limit for those individuals?
Generally four to six months.
But not anything in?
Two of them are four to six months. We have one that goes from a year to two years.
And then, so the adopted, so then that 15,000 will be what now?
I haven't calculated what the, it actually varies a little bit. It's probably going to be a little bit less this year because we've had two of them sitting empty for a little chunk of the year.
We didn't, we didn't rent them outside of?
No, we have not.
Is that a policy?
It was a purpose for which they were, they were acquired. But actually, two of them were acquired to eventually create a parking lot. But until that parking lot is created, uh, we are using them for employees to come in.
But as a city who knowingly, I mean, we have the what, highest, most children, you know what I mean? Like, our homelessness is ridiculous and we're not looking at ways in which we can utilize those buildings for, for that purpose, even as a temporary, even if it's with family promise. I mean, I mean, that's, that's a big slap in the face to having, we know there are families living in church floors and we have buildings open, houses open, and we're not utilizing that. I think we, we could be using those things a little bit better than just sitting vacant.
Of the three right now, you have one that's vacant. That will be, you have one position that looks like that will be coming on board probably in January, we'll make that available to them. The other two have had somebody in for most of the year.
I'm, I'm sure family promise would, I understand it's a policy, but sitting vacant versus knowingly having families out there that don't have a place to go. I would love to see a way in which we could better utilize those as opposed to strictly employee overlay things.
Not as a long term, just as short term.
And I think that's, that's good to bring up because, and I don't know that we've looked at that for, as an opportunity to, I don't know, separate from excise tax. I guess that's.
That's what I'm trying to get to. I've always had questions regarding these homes that we own, you know, and now knowing that, I didn't know that they sat vacant, you know? It's not something I knew about. So it comes up when it comes up.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So let's go back to excise tax.
Okay. Second, that's on page three or four, the tools that we use, and Allison's going to spend a little bit of time talking about them, and these are significant. For one is our partnership with CrowdGravel. She's going to spend a little bit of time. But I'm going to spend first a little bit of time on property development. When The Villages was purchased, The Villages of Cascadehead, I'll use the formal name, it 20% of that, those funds came from this workforce housing fund. And at this point, we have always been, we have been operating under the idea that about that 20% of the development of that will come as workforce housing. And, and so Allison has been working with developers towards that. The other thing that is significant on this is that we've also looked at 20% that, that the first thing would happen with the sale of the property is that the workforce housing fund would be paid back. But we also could, could dedicate a portion of, of proceeds for market development on that, for the market rate part of the housing, to also go into the workforce housing fund. That has a potential to be a very significant amount. As you recall, we paid two and a half plus million dollars for that property. The potential of that is many times more than that. And so that has a potential to be a pretty significant revenue source if a portion of it is dedicated to affordable housing, the workforce housing.
Could you just give an example of what you're saying that I could watch for some reason?
So let's say that we develop, we develop all of the marketable property that we have. A portion of it, we're, we're selling at market rate. And a portion, we're selling at, at, well, it will go as an incentive, or will be used to create the workforce housing. But let's just say, in eventual sale of that property, we get $7 million. Okay? The difference between two and a half and $7 million is going to come back to the city. A portion of that can be used and dedicated to workforce housing.
Oh, I see. So you're kind of flipping it and sun it's head and looking at other ways to use.
Yeah, as a new revenue source.
Back to the line item we used to have, it says the 40.
Yeah. Yep. We know that, we know that.
How we fund it.
Is that, okay, I get it.
Yeah. But remember, you just did enact a future land use map designation for 305 acres of that property. And we said that if you want to utilize this particular future land use map designation, you have to do a minimum of 10% of affordable housing. So we could, in a, in a way, instead of repaying the fund, provide the affordable housing on the, the site when negotiated through a developer.
And I thought part of it was to integrate. And I thought part of it was to integrate all, all levels of affordable, workforce, fancy, I mean, to integrate it all in there. So if we, if we do what you're saying, I'm not seeing how that happens. But unless we do some of that too, but that's ten percent, not twenty.
If you look at the, if you look at the development of the villages, there's two portions of it. There is first a requirement that we will be, that we have of the developer that at least ten percent, and we have been working with current developers to be twenty percent, that would go towards affordable housing and would remain in a permanent fashion affordable. Okay? So that's the first. The second is, you're going to sell this for more than two and a half million dollars. The difference between whatever that number is, a portion of that revenue, of that money, the dollars, can go into this workforce housing fund.
So then are we as a city going to be building?
Which is the land sale. It's just the land sale.
I'm talking about the money that we're gonna, you know, scoop up and, and put back into the budget. Are we then going to be built? Because what I, what I see is budget-wise or money-wise, that makes a lot of sense what you're saying. But what I don't see is housing, the develop for...
Okay, Allison will pick up on that and take it from there because, because your answer is going to come from Allison.
Okay. This is...
Better be good.
That is a good question. Yeah. Current, my frustration with the housing conversation is that we end up talking just about villages. And I think we need to keep in mind that we have to address affordable and workforce housing throughout the city. Villages is a unique situation. It's very complicated. We wanna be mindful in the long range about how we're planning for things, roads and housing. And so I would, my, my word of caution is be careful not to have the construction excise tax be diverted by more talk about villages. Yes, we're doing a lot with housing and I've been working with Amber Reed, planning about providing a housing update to you. It's been since March of eighteen that you've had a housing update. So we'll try to get that to you in the first three months of the new year. And Mr. Chandler's right, we've been working hard with our developer partnerships to bring some housing online. And so the ways that we are working on workforce housing is through the land trust, we're partnering with them. They got a huge grant from Oregon Housing Community Services a couple of years ago, and that has been for down payment assistance. They are, I think, six of the down payment assistance grants out of eight that are implemented on the ground. Remember, this is also countywide, not just in Lincoln City. I think two of them have been in Lincoln City. And then two more are pending, and I don't know if those will, I think they'll be in Newport, but we don't yet have the final answer on that. Let's see. So, so in addition to the land trust, supporting them for permanent housing affordability for homeownership, we also are doing our developer partnerships, one of which is Fernwood Phase One, which would be a for-profit developer doing market rate housing, I think it's sixty-two units, with anywhere from twenty to fifty percent of those units being permanently affordable. And the other, the other property is Northeast Twenty-Fifth Street, City owned site, and that will be about ninety units of rental housing. And I think that that will be eighty percent and below, probably more like sixty percent and below. But again, we're still working on negotiations and we don't have development agreements in place for those projects yet. And so we're working on that. Let's see, we're also implementing recommendations from the housing needs analysis. And, and then Mr. Chandler mentioned the villages at Cascade Head, Master Planet, and Apotillo about the Conference of Land Use Map. So I think we have a lot of things that we're working on and they're all really good efforts. But the construction excise tax is just another funding mechanism for you to consider.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna just add on a little bit to what Allison said and just kind of divert a little bit of attention away from one of the things that she said. When we're talking about excise tax, we're talking about money. We're talking about how to fund this fund, okay? To be used for down payment assistance, to be used to buy property, to be used to whatever, to help with crowd ground, and gap loans. All of those things require money, okay? Most fundamental principle of housing, the market always gets what the market wants. If the house is going to cost two hundred thousand dollars, it's going to get two hundred thousand dollars. It just becomes a matter of who's paying for it. And so when we're talking about tools, we're talking about buying down the market price. That can be done through gifts like free land. That can be done through cash that you're doing through some type of an incentive program. So what we're discussing a little bit today is where does the cash come to do this? Excise tax is one of those. Villages is a very significant discussion in this, not for the land development, but for what you sell that property for. Because again, if you're, well, it could be short-term, it could be long-term, depends on how quickly. We're finding this to be a little bit more stubborn to sell than we thought it was going to be. But when you look, you paid two and a half million dollars for it. Anything above that is cash that comes, it's unrestricted. It doesn't have to go just to the villages. It can go elsewhere in your budget. So you can dedicate a portion of it to be the cash to fund this, this, this fund. That's why the villages is significant, because it represents over time a very large revenue source.
This fund again being the Affordable Housing Fund?
Yes.
Okay. This is the fund we're talking about?
This is the, yeah, we changed it to workforce housing, but yes, that's what the fund that it is.
I also forgot to mention, there's a fifth thing that we're doing, which is the economic development toolbox. The Urban Renewal Agency and the city, you both moved forward additional economic development tools. One of those is a facade improvement loan for targeting workforce housing. So if people need a roof or a heater or something like that. So we haven't yet created the tool, but in May, those tools will be available citywide and Urban Renewal Agency's tools.
So all of the tools that we're doing have one, two, have really two purposes. In the land use ordinance is, it's to make the market price less, okay? Smaller lots, greater density, that's to reduce the land use price. Everything else is to buy down the market price of whatever property you're looking at, okay? All right. Let's talk about the adoption of a, of a local option excise tax. This comes along, these are some of the highlights of the ordinance that Richard had also prepared on this one. The application of the tax can be residential, can be commercial, can be industrial, can be all three, okay? The amount is up to one percent of residential and no cap on the commercial and industrial. I'd lump those two together.
Which includes mixed use components of mixed use?
There are some exemptions that you can make. Possible exemptions include private schools, hospital, religious facilities for worship and education, long and short-term care facilities, residential care facilities, continuing care retirement communities, and improvements funded by the construction excise tax. I won't go into any more on the programs, but I wanted to just spend a few minutes. And also the last bit of information that you need to get, I'm gonna have to read this. You got, I'm gonna be working off of this sheet, okay? These are the costs that are associated with building a house in Lincoln City. We're building a building. I'm gonna use just the residential house part. So you're looking at a house that's gonna have a valuation of two hundred thousand dollars on it. You're, the city will require you to pay nine thousand, one hundred and fifty-six dollars in SDC charges. Those go for your water and sewer, which is six thousand, two hundred and thirty-nine, your parks, which is two thousand, two hundred and thirteen, transportation, which is seven hundred and sixty-nine, and storm drain, which is twenty-five dollars. If you're starting from bare ground, you're going to have other fees associated with this. A hundred and sixty, which total, two thousand, nine hundred and twenty-two dollars. They include a hundred and sixty dollars for a water meter, two hundred dollars for inspection, erosion control kit at, I'm rounding up to a hundred and twenty-six dollars, and a sewer line water connection, two thousand, four hundred and thirty-six dollars.
Water.
That's what I said, didn't I?
You said sewer.
Oh, I meant water, sorry. I'm looking at the maximum price, so I'm going to say you're building in the northeast end of town, which means you also have a four thousand, six hundred and eighty-two dollars for a traffic SDC charge as well, okay? Your building permit on a two hundred thousand dollar home will be one thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. Your school district excise tax is one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars. Your state excise tax is one hundred and eight thousand dollars. Some of these are based on, I need to point out, some of these are based on square footage. So the example I'm using is two hundred thousand dollars, fifteen hundred square feet. For a grand total of twenty thousand and sixty dollars that the city, the school, and the state are collecting before you've even begun, okay? On a two, on a two hundred thousand dollar house, you would then also be adding a two thousand dollar excise tax if you adopt this ordinance, so you add another two thousand dollars to, to that. So that leads me finally then to the questions. Do you want to propose a local construction excise tax ordinance? And if you want to propose the tax, when do you want to propose it? Again, same question pertaining to the budget.
And one more thing, I just wanted to let you know, I heard from Derek Tokos from Newport. He said that part of what helped to make the case for the construction excise tax is that they had also recalibrated their SDCs. So money had reduced SDCs, that made it more palatable for construction excise tax.
I would...
SDCs are a challenge. I know planning and color works, we need to talk about that. But we don't have a curse word, but to be...
There is a cost to do that. And, and to me, that discussion you want to happen independently of, of an excise tax. Because your, your, your SDCs are meant to pay for future upgrades to your system.
They're going to different things.
And you don't wanna shortchange, you're gonna pay for it somewhere else if you shortchange your SDCs to make this work. So it needs to happen, so if our SDCs need to be reevaluated, they need to be reevaluated independently of this, not to make this work.
They were, they just did it at the same time, so the impact of the construction upgrades was not...
Because they lowered the, because they changed the way that they assess this development charges
Yes.
based on square footage, so smaller homes pay less.
Which is something I keep hearing over and over and over again from developers, is that if we adopted square footage versus anything else, it would, period, that's something that is a watch from.
And wasn't it like about four years ago that the SDCs were dropped forty or forty-two percent? It's very similar.
Just sewer water.
They changed it to square footage and... To me, they're like totally separate.
So, back to you.
So how, this excise tax, is it paid by the purchaser, by the construction?
Whatever the market will bear. Somebody will pay.
Somebody will pay.
Somebody will pay it by adding it to the price, or somebody will pay it because they lowered their price?
That's what I'm perfect.
Yeah.
They'll get paid in the end.
And it's...
Before they build, before they build a house.
Before they build a...
In gunning with the building permit.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
And it's based on what dollar amount?
The, it's...
The sale price, assessed value, the what?
It's of the value that is listed on the building permit.
Oh, construction.
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 So that's not a permanent seller for it.
Or it could be, or it could be not, well, construction, it could be new construction, it could be remodeling. It's whatever is on your building permit. This is, this isn't, this isn't assessed against an existing home that is just sold. This goes with building permits. Along with your school.
Excellent.
Same, same thing.
Are those higher or lower than market values? Building value, building permit value?
Probably. Come in.
I think there's, I think there are... I think there are, I think with permitting, there are required valuations that are added in, depending on what work is done. So I don't know if they are higher or lower than what the actual cost is.
If a builder's gonna come in and they say, I'm doing eighty thousand dollars worth of work, that's what they're gonna put down on their building permit.
So it's determined when the permit is applied for? It's that amount?
Yes.
I got it.
I just, I still question this one, whether we have, we're so fortunate, Lincoln City, to have all the land that we have, all the incentives, the toolbox, all of these things. I just, this one just doesn't, I'm not ready for it, I guess.
The one question that I tried to find from the other communities, maybe could not get an answer because nobody knows. How did it affect your building? Did you, did this? Every developer, every builder that I know will tell you, if you only get rid of SDCs, everything will be great. Okay, everybody, and they all say that. But I tried to find, by adopting an excise tax, did it really affect the amount of building that happened in the city? And quite honestly, nobody knows. There's so many variables in it that nobody could really give me that answer.
Newport has said no, but for various reasons.
No way.
That, that the construction excise tax did not affect the, the, the construction.
The difficulty with saying that is that there are so many variables in it. They're just, he's had this conversation with, with Tip all the time. And the market gets what the market wants, it depends on who pays for it. If the market will only have a two hundred thousand dollar sell price or building price for your house, well, the buyer may pay for that, or seller may pay for it, depending on how much they pay in that. So it just, like I said, I, I know what Newport told me, but there's just so many variables in all of that.
We don't really have a big building boom going on.
You don't?
I'd be more comfortable looking at square footage or SDC or excise tax. That's two different things.
I'm, I'm agreeing with Councilor Inta. Anything that adds to the cost of a house, even with exemptions, is going to create the lowest rung house value to increase. And to me, that defeats what we're trying to do, is find ways to lower the cost. And, you know, councils previous to us bought the land. They, they could have put more money into this account, cash. Because it was at the same time we sold land to Bymart, and a big chunk of that went into this account. And thus then went into the villages. So we were, at that point, we were thinking to have building, a cash account. But if I can go back to, you know, what we are doing, remember, we've, we've funded thirty thousand dollars per house for the gap in this pride, pride, proud ground houses. You know, you would talk about little, a hundred and fifty thousand from Newport, you know, example, in five houses, which is more than, you know, being done, you know, at thirty thousand. But then for me, it's about getting the housing, I mean, anything to do. If we want to do cash incentives, then let's sell some of our land. We've got assets. We chose long ago, kind of the right road argument, is we don't have a lot of land. We don't have a lot of developed land. So we, we bought it at a fire sale so that we could deal with, use it as a subsidy, you know, hopefully get a windfall, a sale, and, and fund, then we would run out of land. So I'm, I'm just not a fan for the excise. I see the, the purpose for Newport, a Newport... I see the purpose for Newport, and Newport had no other choices. A lot of communities don't. And so at least they're doing something. So I don't want to begrudge them, but you know, I don't know what they've done either with even $160 or...
They have to determine...
Yeah, they have to determine, but yet we still have housing, you know, they have the biggest housing need also.
Buildings, yeah. There are 10 units on the north end of town.
That's costing... That's $160,000 per unit subsidy, right? It's a multi-billion dollar project.
And what's not, you know... Yeah. I need to add to our list, the things we're already doing is we defer taxes in this community for housing and childcare. So we give up revenue right now, or at least the opportunity is there, and there are projects we defer, you know, to help subsidize. So not only, you know, the tools that are in our disposal are many, that, what we've found, has not been the key to success. We have to develop the massive developers here.
Here's a crazy idea that you... I know you won't like. What if we built it ourselves? Looked at the city, built it, and managed it? I mean, we have three houses that we have it in the workforce. Everybody's like, "Wrrr." I know. I know. And nobody wants to... I'm just saying, look, we're looking... We already are a property manager, first of all. We already are, right? We have the land, we have the money, we knew there's a desire, we know we can do it. I know it's... We don't want to do that. However, it still needs to be done. We need to do it. We can showcase what it is. We have the opportunity, we have three different blueprints of houses to do. I mean, it's a wonderful example to say, "Hey, look, here's how serious we are and what we're doing." And it's really... I don't know. I don't care. But that's the thing, I mean, really, we can do it. We can do it.
Seven hundred percent. I'm sorry.
I was just gonna say, I just want... I'll give you a wider point here.
Sure.
That if the city helped, partnered with somebody to build something, and they owned it and managed it and whatever, that's a whole other thing.
That's not... We already kind of doing that already. I'm talking about the city of Lincoln City does this for this process.
There's two parts of that, and two different routes to consider on that, and they both require different kinds of consideration. If you are talking about the city managing properties, whether it's apartments, or housing, or things like that, governments do that all the time.
We already are doing it.
We are doing that with three. If you are talking about flipping the properties, building a spec home, and then trying to sell it at a lower rate, then you are assuming the risk of a property developer using taxpayer funds, and those are...
That's not what I'm trying to do. And that's gonna... That's a jerk move to the rest of the community too, who are building. That's not what I'm trying to do. I'm saying, we build it, we can build it cheaper, it's our land.
We can't build it cheaper. And we... It's Newport, and look at the... There is not a...
For example, if the public buy building anything cheap. But it took the revenue, you know what I mean? Will we revenue into that account? As opposed to an excise tax?
Prevaluing wage. You're not allowing to build cheap.
We don't require anything the city does to be prevailing wage. We don't have that right here.
Yeah, if it's a city project and it's over $50,000, we're paying...
We asked before.
There's the difference between building homes and build... Typically, local government doesn't build homes. We're not builders. CIS probably want to talk to us about... Excuse me, that's not what local government's doing.
Correct. Contracting to be built, but we do build infrastructure when the developer fails. So I mean, that's why we have typically security for infrastructure, and Fernwood is a good example, and unfortunately, we don't have the security. It's getting back.
The way? The way cities have generally done this, including us, is through land trusts. And that's how we actually have done this, is through funding a land trust, which is a nonprofit organization that then assumes all the risk and everything else, and has the expertise to do that. And so, you know, if you're interested in doing that, we've already set it up on how to do that, as through the land trust, and now it's through proud ground. And I think prevailing wage or not, I think we should finish infrastructure like Fernwood that has not been finished.
Well, we also need to recognize that there's an employment connection, so we're talking about the impacts on residential construction, which is mostly what we have. But there's also commercial and industrial construction, and there is an employment impact with that construction that is not helping directly housing. So just keep that in mind when you're talking about a CET, that yes, the majority impact would be, as Ron mentioned, the, you know, our single-family residential builders. But there's also a component over the lifetime of the city on, you know...
You do have new hotel construction that could... A CET could have been imposed on, it's commercial construction. So I mean, residential, you have the 1%, but there's no cap on commercial, industrial, mixed use.
The two biggest projects we have are that hospital and the police building. Forty-five million dollars in construction.
Starfish would have been involved.
And that would have been the third one.
And they didn't want it. They were really...
So...
But wait, just a second. I'm just stuck a little bit on what Allison said. So the commercial and industrial, and they're not providing towards housing or whatever, but they are providing jobs to people, so they just get it.
And tax.
So I'm just kind of thinking that maybe...
And I'm glad she brings it up, because it's good to remember, you could split things up, but it seems defeating again here. Why are we doing urban renewal to encourage stuff and tools, and then tax the heck out?
Yeah, and Portland's urban renewal is 30%, has to go to housing, and we don't have that. So there's lots of ways to get to housing.
Can you do an excise tax on commercial but not residence?
Yeah, that's what Allison was saying.
And it's also hard though, because we don't have development demand. That's what we're trying to do with our property development partnerships, is say, "Hey, look what cool thing can happen here." Yes, it took some public subsidy, but it's kind of an injection or catalyzing of that particular market, so that others will see what they want to do and follow.
So you don't want to tax them. I'm having a hard time here.
You didn't accept it, did you?
No. Ms. Hinton, I can point out one other thing, since we're talking about this fund, there is one other thing that we are starting after the first year, and have worked it into our timeframe to be able to do this. We do have... The city still has the eight, nine small lots that we're just simply gonna put out on the market. That's still is planning on doing that. When in our discussions, whatever funds we get out of that would go back into this workforce house. That's the infusion of one. We have no idea whether or not they're going to sell. Some of them are difficult lots to build on, but we will be putting those out after the first year.
So are we trying to give incentive with those particular ones, or we're just gonna try and sell?
Just market sell, right.
Just sell, see what happens.
We have to do an RQ process in order to hire a Realtor, and then have them listed, and it's staff time at a cell level, so I apologize.
She's the reason.
You know, I know exactly. We looked at how to tie it. I know. It's very busy schedule, and that's why we looked at saying, okay, we might catch a moment or two, she might catch a moment or two to be able to put that together after the first year. So do you want to propose a local option construction excise tax?
Sounds like I'll say no by itself.
I think it's killing me. Not at this time.
We've written that ordinance.
Thank you for your time. Really helping with my presentation. I gotta pull what I need.
You copy this, paste it. So just mayor of what I got out of this, out of the pre-talk, construction excise tax, I put that in the document file. The fireworks, we go forward with the plan that we laid out, and then there was about half a dozen things that you wanted me to take a look at in the marketing department. And then what I heard for the gas tax, let's put together some more information as it pertains to timing, how it all works, how it would all get passed, try to refine a little bit better on the numbers that we can expect on that, and bring that back to you again. That's kind of what I got out of all of this.
That's what I got out of it.
All right. Questions? Thoughts?
Thanks for the food.
Thanks. More non-dairy stuff. All right. So next is council meeting, our only council meeting in December. Won't be here. You know? Because I took your place. Nine, so next Monday.
And then if we have dates for the...
There is plans for it.
So I don't... So I don't plan vacation.
On the Tuesday, don't we? Meeting at the 10th.
The 10th.
Four of you have signed your bail to go around the villages tour.
Can we get a ride up to the time?
I know we can have. Councilor Hinton, on this, I'm gonna rely heavily on this with you.
Okay.
And if you will meet here, we will transport you up. If you will meet here, we'll transport you up there. I don't have my phone, so I don't remember the time.
No, it's 9:01. If we meet at 1:00.
And just a reminder, at 4:30 today, they're lighting up the dock.
A new tradition at town.
You gonna count that down too?
No. I won't be there. I'll be doing all of that credit to...
It's on a quarter, you're supposed to hold myself.
Oh, that's my fault. Let's give God the best.
$450 on the table.
Yeah. I want to just...
All right, we're done. Thank you. I want to dance.